I would like to call to order the city council meeting of November 5, 2025. City Clerk?
Councilmember Tim Chisen.
Aye.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
Councilmember Falcone.
Here.
Councilmember Pascal.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Arnold.
Here.
Mayor Curtis.
Here.
All here.
All right. Study session tonight is on two items. First, we will review the 2025-2026 mid biennial budget update. Second, we will discuss the 2025-2030 capital improvement program update. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30. City Manager.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. So before we jump in, I just want to give a huge thank you to the Finance Administration team, particularly our Budget Finance leadership. This has been a big process to get to you here throughout the summer and the fall, and also a huge thank you to our departments and everyone associated with creating this. It's a lot of hard work. We're very excited to present it to you tonight. We're trying to keep this focused on being pragmatic and less expensive, and you're going to hear more about that going forward. There's obviously some storm clouds on the horizon, so we try to be very precise in the things that we asked. One thing I want to highlight that Kevin is going to talk about briefly at the very beginning. As we all know, the federal government is shut down, and we do have the issue of SNAP not being funded. So we are going to be proposing to you tonight under the business item that the council consider approving a fiscal note for $100,000 to be set aside for emergency food if necessary. So we're going to touch on that weekly today and bring it back at the end of the day. The reason we want to do that is November is kind of unique. There's no way any one city or even a state can backfill SNAP, but with sort of what's going on with SNAP, we thought that having some flexibility and ability to respond would be super helpful over the next few weeks. So just wanted to highlight that. Yes?
Is SNAP a federal or state program?
Federal program.
Okay. Thanks.
So with that, since I asked Kevin to insert that at the last minute, I wanted to give you an overview as to why I did that, and then I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kevin Pellstring, our financial planning manager.
Welcome, team.
Thank you. Thank you, Kurt. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. We have, as Kurt mentioned, an update on the 25-26 mid buy review. This is the culmination of basically entire summer's work, but definitely a lot less work than the full budget development. I have about 30 slides for you on the budget today, and there's another nine or so for the CIP. So some of these can go rather quickly, but wanted to provide as much updates as possible and happy to answer questions as we go, as always. So we'll have some updates on some fund balances, go through some recommended service packages, and some notable adjustments. So the agenda, first thing, as City Manager mentioned, we have a discussion of Emergency Food Rapid Response Fund. We'll talk a little bit about the outlook, financial outlook for 25-26, the general fund forecast, the economic weather forecast, because we won't let that metaphor die, and go through the recommended 2026 mid buy service packages and a few other notable adjustments. And finally, a brief update on some of the federal impacts, but those are changing rather quickly, so we'll do our best to stay atop of it. So first and foremost, we are proposing, and there's a fiscal note that will come back, staff is proposing a fiscal note to allocate $100,000 of the general fund balance to the emergency action fund to support local human services providers responding to the increased need from the temporary shutdown of SNAP. And that will be brought forward for council consideration at the regular meeting under the City Manager's report.
Kurt, are you going to take questions on it now, though? Okay.
So yes, questions now would be great. And part of the reason we propose this, this is money we have today, and the budget discussion's about 2026. So if the council chooses to take this action tonight, we also have a month to adjust the budget between now and December 9th, final action. But by just using a fund balance, we know we have it, and if we need to allocate it, we can. So that's why we picked this as the funding source. But happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, any questions? My question is, are you thinking it's going to be similar to the grant process we did
The initial need, there may be, the if may be met. There is a need, but the need is $15,000 worth of emergency food to be, and we would be rolling it out in that fashion.
Uh huh.
So it's not, it's not binary. It's not if there's a need, we said the city necessarily is going to spend entire $100,000.
Yeah.
Is that true?
Yeah, I mean, and that's the right question, and I think that is, is both if and how. Just sort of two pieces of context. The goal of this is to respond to this very specific thing that's happening, which is, you know, unique and has never happened before. Slightly separate from the regular requests we get from human services agencies where there was a giant unmet or unfunded request from the city of Kirkland from human service agencies. So we received, for example, $300,000 more of requests for our human service agencies for grants that we weren't able to fund in the last budget. So parsing through the need is going to be a little bit tough, but what we want to do is basically respond to what we think is going to see as a very strong increase in the next two weeks or so, and then we think that will recede. And so we want to be available to do that. But yes, it's up to, but as needed. And.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Two questions, and maybe this gets to the business agenda or not. Do we know what other cities are doing so that there could be a coordinated messaging to say SNAP recipients go to Hope Link or these other organizations? And in addition to what we're doing, what other cities may be doing?
I don't know yet. I did talk with the city manager at Bellevue, and they're doing something similar, but they don't meet until next week. They're trying to, I think everyone's kind of watching to see what everyone else does because, as I said, the deficit is so massive, no one entity can do it, but everyone wants to make sure that we're available to do something. So I'm guessing I'm going to see all the cities do it. We're going to try to get that information, and I'll see if I get better information for you at the business meeting.
And secondly, you mentioned that this would be similar to what we've done before, funding organizations we already fund around food security. What requirements, to Councilmember Tim Chisen's point, what requirements do we have on what those organizations fund with the money we've previously given them?
That's a good question. I might have to phone a friend on that, so I don't know.
Yep.
If let us all does, but if we can't answer that right now, we will make sure we have an answer for you when we get to the.
This meeting would be great.
Fiscal note section.
Lynn, you want to go ahead?
Yes. So when we did the 252026 grant application process, we received obviously many grant requests, much of which was for food. And there were six organizations that requested over $500,000 for food programs. We awarded less than half of that. So there was, as Kurt just mentioned, $300,000 worth of requests that was not funded. And in that grant application, they specify exactly what the food program is, and they have measurements of success, who the services go to. And as part of the grant process, we always do a monitoring and reporting. So we're looking at all of the data that says who they provided the services to and how does that match up against what they said they would do. And we award them their money based upon meeting their measurements of success. So if they actually aren't serving Kirkland residents and they're not meeting those measurements, they may not get the full award of what they asked for. So if we provided some of this, say if we looked at this $300,000 that was not funded, we know what food programs it is intended for because that was in the original application. So correspondingly, there would be specifics on who it would go to, what the program is, and what the success measures would be.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen, did you have another question?
Just a comment that I think would be interesting for us to get updates from Hope Link as to where the, specifically the market they have in Kirkland, and specifically periodic updates as to where their food levels are. If their food levels are fine, great, but if they're dipping below, you know, safe levels, I'd like to know that.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Falco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one other question that I've heard from many community members is, would assistance like this, could it be used to help folks specifically for holiday meals, things like that, folks who can't afford like a Thanksgiving meal? Are there human services agencies that we work with who would be able to provide that? Is that something that Hope Link does specifically as like a Thanksgiving meal?
We haven't been assessing that, and the concept that we came up with, but that we certainly could, you know.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'll make sure, take that back to the team.
To the rest of the presentation, but thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
As you said, it's an ongoing fluid situation, and I appreciate that we're looking at a response. I also want to compliment our human services staff for how quickly last week they got information out on what you can do to help or where you can go to resources. So staff is working hard on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And real quick, before I keep going, I did want to highlight, I didn't introduce anyone else at the table, but we'll be passing it off to them for the CIP update portion. Veronica Hill, our financial planning supervisor; Jessica Clemm, our senior financial analyst for CIP; and Rob English for the, our capital division manager. So they have that portion at the end. So they'll just stand up here and be patient until then. All right. So financial update and forecast. So before we really get into the results and the updated general fund forecast, I did want to highlight kind of the top line takeaway from today, which is that revenues overall are reaching budget but not providing the same large surplus as the previous years. We are seeing some personnel savings, expecting some, and there's, as you heard, a lot in June and since then, a lot of uncertainty in the economy and what's going to happen next. So I did want to highlight that, you know, remembering how we ended 2324, we had large fund balances from retail sales tax ended about four and a half million over budget, utility taxes ended about two and a half million above budget, and investment interest ended about $4 million above budget. And in addition to that, we had a lot of one-time monies from federal stimulus funding that was used to jumpstart the Kirkland teen union building. We had large balances in REIT that were available to help replace some of the street levy funding in the transportation CIP, which helped avoid larger general fund transfers. So we, we had a lot of large one-time fund balance that we were able to deploy, council was able to deploy to, to make these historic investments in human services and across the budget. It, at this time, doesn't appear that we will have that same level of surplus going forward, or looking forward to the end of the 2526 budget. So just wanted to highlight that and underline it quickly. So overall, starting to look at tax revenue, so this is, it says 25, but we're really looking at 2526 estimates. So overall, currently projecting about $3.8 million surplus over the biennium in taxes and the investment interest. We're, you know, a lot of these are coming, are showing growth, but not significant growth, or, you know, some growth this year, but we expect that to be a little bit slower next year. And that's all without the, you know, added effect or threat of economic disruption or any larger impacts of federal tariffs. Starting with retail sales tax, so as you've seen in the, in the monthly sales tax memos, retail sales tax is relatively flat from 2024, with some uneven growth in some sectors, offset by some slowdown in construction and contracting activity, which really may portend some, you know, further slowdown in 26 and on. So we're watching that really carefully, and that's, we're seeing that across the region. And other cities are also seeing flat or below budget sales tax, so this is a regional issue. And then ending 25, we're expecting that utility taxes will end roughly $587,000 over budget. Probably we'll see a little bit more growth in 26, but a lot of the approved rate increases were, were really front-loaded in 25 and lower in 26. So that's likely to be a little less growth in 26. RGRL fees, we'll talk a little bit more about in the next slide, but right now, based on the projection, probably likely to be almost $2 million under budget for the whole biennium. And then investment interest is projecting about $2.2 million over budget in 25, and then forecasted to be roughly at budget in 26 as the Fed begins to cut interest rates, which will slow down some of our earnings. So starting with business license and RGRL revenue, wanted to provide an update. We did discuss this a little bit at the June financial retreat, but business license fees revenue is expected at or above budget. It's the RGRL, the revenue generating regulatory license fees that are under budget, and our original estimate, as we were going through the mid-buy, was $4.6 million in 25 on a $5.5 million budget. So that's, all the numbers that you see in this presentation are based on that. In the last, you know, couple of weeks, I've really been looking at this closely with staff, and I think it'll probably be closer to 4.8 million or 5 million in 25, which is good news. We hired a new LTE in September that's focusing a lot of their time on outreach to unlicensed businesses, and they have a plan to reach about 60 businesses a week. And also finding, it seems like every day, new employers that have underreported revenue or FTE counts that we can collect more RGRL from. So we're optimistic about that and tracking it really closely. And just also wanted to note that I think, you know, future RGRL growth is not likely to be very high, a lot of different things kind of offsetting each other. So unless council were to raise the fee or add authority for annual increases for inflation, which is not currently in the code, it's unlikely that that is going to grow much from about 4.8 or 5 million per year. And in this table, we do have shown some of the data for the number of employers and the number of employees in Kirkland. There's a couple of years where we recently lost some data from 22 and 23, so that's why you see some of those carrots in there and some estimates based, basically to reproduce that. But the data for 21, 24, and 25 is good. And you can see that the theoretical RGRL revenues is based on employee counts, and then the actual RGRL revenues is the, the money that we received that particular year. So there was a gap in 24, and it's showing, you know, a larger gap in 25, but we're optimistic that by the year end, we'll be a little bit closer to that 4.8, $5 million number. All right. So moving on to expenditures, so over the biennium, we're expecting that personnel expenditures are going to be under budget by about $2.8 million. That's driven by a few different things that I'll go on a little bit more detail in the next slide. Discretionary expenses overall are expected to be above budget, driven by some unexpected supplies in 2025, namely some of the severe weather vouchers and parks and community services. We had some unexpected PC hardware replacement related to the IT incident and just kind of shoring up our internal systems and backups there, and then evidence freezer replacements. So there's just some unexpected things that have come up in 25 that's driven that above budget. We're showing that professional services are slightly under budget in 25, but I do expect that at the end of the biennium, that's likely to be at budget or slightly above with all the work completed in the biennium. So this is showing an estimate for 25 and then the budget in 2026. So it might be, I think, underestimating what that professional services number will eventually be. Credit card fees is one piece that's been pretty high in 25, so they're expected to be about 17, 18% above budget in 2025, which is a 20% increase over 24. We do have a new banking contract that we are going to see an increase in our interest earnings on city cash balances, so we're hoping to be able to cover the cost of some of those in 26 and monitoring that. And so we'll bring back some deeper analysis ahead of the 2728 budget and make some recommendations on that.
Yeah.
Really quick, Kevin, when you, just maybe for our audience, and frankly, for my own clarification, so credit card fees, we're talking about the merchant fees that we pay as a city on credit card transactions that our customers, consumers, residents.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So on every single transaction, we pay a percentage, percentage to our merchant agreement, and you're saying we're going to have a new merchant agreement?
The, the new agreement is actually not on the merchant agreement side, it's actually just our, our banking. So we have a new, a new banking provider that's going to give us a little bit more interest so we can offset the higher costs.
The higher cost of merchant.
Over here on, on credit card purchases, yeah. But I don't believe that we pass on any, or mostly don't pass on credit card fees to folks that make payments in the city.
I just wanted to be clear, we're not running up credit card debt and.
Right. Yeah, no, good question.
Paying exorbitant interest on credit card charges. Okay, thanks.
I'll follow up to Councilmember Black's question. I know at one time we investigated whether or not we could actually charge credit card fees to those who are charging. Are any cities doing that? That was an item that we investigated a number of years ago, as I recall. Michael, do you remember?
When we do an issue paper every biennium on the credit card fees, and Bellevue and Redmond were just starting to look at it when we did the issue paper for the 2526 budget, so we'll follow up.
Right.
And we just, in the last year, did the RFP for banking services and re-upped our contract with US Bank, and as an incentive, they increased our earnings of cash that's sitting in the bank, and they said we could cover more expenses than they allowed in the past. So we're going to be judiciously using that extra revenue to cover some of our costs, even though they're, they're covered by fees.
Just also want to remind the council that a lot of these transactions are development services, and our development services fees make an assumption of credit card amounts in those fees. So we sort of build them in rather than charge them a premium, but the pace is accelerating, so we may want to revisit that policy as part of the 2728 budget. So we do recover some of this in the development services fees themselves.
Okay, go ahead.
Right. So a little deeper dive in the personnel expenses. As I said, we're projecting to finish the biennium about $2.8 million under budget, which includes all of the available COLA reserves, which is 4.8 million remaining right now. So reminder, the COLA reserve is what we set up at the beginning of each budget process, and we make certain assumptions on CPI based on, you know, the current or recent CPI numbers. So we built that on a base assumption of 3.5 million in each 25 and 26. That came out at 3.6% and 2.7% over 25 and 26, so we are going to see some savings there. And in addition, we are seeing savings from the Public Employees Retirement System, PERS, and Public Safety Employees Retirement System, SERS, which are both decreased their employer contribution rates as of July 1st, 25, from 9.1% to 5.6%. So we're going to see about $1.5 million in savings from the budget over the biennium there. We are going to recommend to council to consider setting aside some of that savings in the 2728 COLA reserve to prepare for future increases if that comes back up, because that, those rates are changed occasionally, and a lot of times, I think they're changed based on the state financial situation as a large employer. And then finally, due to vacancies, we're expecting savings in 25 about $2.5 million under budget. And given a lot of assumptions about open collective bargaining agreements and fire overtime costs, we're expecting that 26 personnel costs are going to be right at or slightly below budget.
Okay.
And what you've all been waiting for, the 2530 forecast. So this is the general fund forecast. Again, this is looking at ongoing revenues and expenditures only in the future biennium. So we, we show this every, every time we do a financial update. In May, in June, sorry, when we did the, the financial retreat, I showed you a financial forecast for 2728 with a deficit of 12 million. The good news, that's down to a mere nine and a half million for 2728, which is still a large deficit and something that we're taking really seriously and thinking a lot about options to bring back to council. Some of the changes since the May or June update was adding in the pool to human services grants, so this is basically just to pass, pass through as were the lead agency of the pool to human services grants, but that's about $3 million, so that changes some of the numbers. It includes the increased investment interest and tax revenue, and it also includes those savings from PERS and PISers contributions. Some of the unknowns, as always, tariffs, if and when that, you know, has a larger impact on either the city expenses or revenues, that could drive this, you know, a little further out of balance. And second, an economic downturn, which is anyone's guess at this point. But at this point, we are looking at, yeah, about nine and a half million dollars on an ongoing basis for 2728 as a starting point, and then we'll develop options for council consideration and bring those back in February in the May retreats of next year.
Okay. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you. So on the, on the chart, the total resources for 2025 are 153 million, and we don't actually get, it drops significantly in 2026, and we don't get back to that until 2029. Can you kind of, can I explain that a little bit, like why that is?
Yeah, I mean, some of the, the resources in 25 are these revenues above budget from the previous biennium for, from some, you know, ongoing revenues like sales tax, investment interest, and utilities taxes. So we have a lot of those resources that we're bringing in, so that is what was able to, you know, balance the 2526 budget, but we were not counting on those going forward.
So, so more, so more revenue came in during the past years that got, that got us up there, but we're not accounting for that additional revenue.
Right.
In the future.
Right.
So that's, you would say that's, that's very conservative?
I think in previous biennium, that is very conservative. I think that looking at what revenues have been like the last year, I think that's actually a pretty, it's a safe bet, yeah.
Let's start with a roll call.
Aaron Jacobson.
Here.
Gina Madea.
Here.
Julia Nolan.
Here.
Scott Reiser.
Here.
Angela Rosman.
Here.
Rodney Rutherford.
Here. Next item on the agenda is comments from the audience. This is the portion of the meeting when we hear from the public about items that are not scheduled for public hearing, but there are no public hearings tonight, so pretty much anything's on the table, almost. And so if you would like to address the commission at this time, then raise your hand. If you're online, you can press the raise hand button.
Our economic weather forecast. So here are just some, you know, big numbers. But I think current projections are about 3.8, 3.9% for the third quarter, and there was a small, there was a contraction of about 0.9% in the first quarter, if you remember. So the GDP numbers are very volatile right now, given a lot of the tariff policies, reduction in government, in federal government spending. And economists note that some of the tariff policy is likely to reduce the GDP numbers over the next couple of years from where they would have been otherwise. Consumer confidence has decreased about 90, or to 94.2 as an index in September, and it showed that consumers are less optimistic about high inflation and tariff uncertainty and are pessimistic about future employment prospects and business conditions. So that is a, is a concern, it's something we're tracking. National inflation is starting to creep up, and in Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue region, we've seen an increase from 2.7% in June to 3.2% in August. So we're watching that really, really closely, but that could continue to have a pretty big impact on a lot of our expenses, especially in personnel. And then tariff pressures remain high. So far, economists, especially the International Monetary Fund, are seeing a smaller impact globally than expected, but there's some expectation that as we get closer to the holidays and the end of the year, inventories might dry up and they, those prices might start coming up faster. And then finally, as with all things, the, the government shutdown is definitely impacting a lot of the federal data, like I mentioned. So there's a lot of data that we should have received in October and haven't received yet. And like we've mentioned already, the SNAP benefits were not funded on November 1st and may only be partially funded in November. Wanted to provide a quick update on the King County sales tax. So King County approved the Safe and Stables Community Sales Tax, which was an additional 0.1% sales and use tax, and in effect for the 2627 budget cycle. So that took effect on, on October 1st, and the collection will start in January. So as always, that does increase, you know, the cost of, of sales tax on every, every retail good. It might impact our other retail sales tax, which includes sporting goods, furniture, electronics, clothing, and that sort of thing, which was 18% of our total sales tax in 24 and about 20% of the last four years. That demand is relatively elastic, although it's difficult to kind of disentangle the impact of rising sales tax with different, you know, volatility in prices from tariffs. So there is a lot going on all at once, as has been true for a while.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Kevin, were you, were you done with this slide?
Yeah.
Okay. So one thing, this is a slight tangent, but it's directly related to the 1% increase in sales tax for public safety. There's a local grant component, yes or no, and are we, the city of Kirkland is totally engaged in opportunities to secure funding for programs here based on, is that a fair question? Or?
Put a friend on that one. I'm not sure if there's a local grant component to this.
This is not that.
I'm not sure, so.
Something different than what I'm thinking of.
We have a local option that comes from the same state legislation, but that would be something we talk about next year as a potential consideration.
Okay, I think I'm conflating, I may be conflating two different.
I believe there is a grant component with the Safe and Stable Community Sales Tax if the city of Kirkland were to initiate that. I don't know that there's a grant that we get from King County, you know, starting that sales tax.
Okay, so there might be a program being in develop, okay.
The CJTC was directed in part of the same litigation to fund, to start a grant program in addition to the sales tax authorization, so there were multiple funding sources to increase revenues for these sort of public safety matters. And so that might be the grant program you're thinking of. In order to be eligible for that grant program, you need to be at least part of a county that has done the sales tax or be yourself a jurisdiction that has the sales tax. There's a number of other bases for applying, of being able to receive the grant, but I do think that this, the county sales tax helps the city apply if we never did our own.
Okay, so just high level, there is a mechanism in this where some of these sales tax dollars are, do flow back to the city of Kirkland to fund safe community here.
Possibly, yes. Sounds like that's possible. We have to get labor information.
Okay. And in any event, we'll be totally on top of it when.
Yes, we will.
When the time comes. Okay, thank you.
Well, it's evening, we will.
All right, go ahead, Kevin.
All right. And another quick update, this is kind of a background thing, but there was also a change at the state level in the types of services that are subject to retail sales tax that began October 1st. Again, I think that is effective on collection starting in January, but it will change what is eligible for sales tax and actually increases the number of things that are eligible for sales tax and, and remove some things from what are eligible from BNO tax. So it's possible that this will, you know, cause an increase in sales tax revenue for the city, but we won't see that until the distribution that we receive in December. So that will be kind of the first indication of that.
Councilmember Falco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Okay, I, I may not have the right bill here that applies to this, but I know that there was a Seattle Times article this week that there was an impact on school, school districts that was not anticipated by recent state action on additional retail sales tax that's going to apply to their temporary employees, like they're still, you know, working out defining what exactly that means. And I know for like Washington School District, it's anticipated to be between one and one and a half million dollars annually of an impact from the school district, and there are also impacts, I know North Shore School District was quoted in the article, Seattle School District, and some wondering if this is something that would be at a cost to the city of Kirkland as well, if city governments are anticipating that any of our expenditures would be taxed additionally that we're not anticipating.
I don't know if Michael has more thoughts on that. I don't think that we know the impact at this point, but it's definitely something that we're thinking about.
We're in discussions on what it applies to and what it doesn't apply to, so it's being researched right now.
Thank you. Some more to come, hopefully soon on that. Thank you.
All right. And in conclusion, similar to what we were saying in June, you know, Kirkland remains in a stable financial situation, although the larger situation is pretty unclear. We're likely to see revenues over budget in 2526, but much smaller than in recent years, and we are showing a deficit in 27 and 28. in a stable financial situation, although the larger situation is pretty unclear. We're likely to see revenues over budget in '25, '26, but much smaller than in recent years. And we are showing a deficit in '27 and '28 and some substantial things that we've already identified. And, but the signs of blue sky, as always, are that our reserves are fully funded. So we do have a buffer against uncertainty going forward. So next I'll go through our recommended 20, City Manager recommended 2026 Midby Service Packages by goal areas. So I'll try and go through these a little quickly, but please stop me if there's specific questions or folks want to talk about individual ones. So the, the priorities for which service packages to bring forward or recommend for this period was to focus on specifically on reifying the '25, '26 council work plan items, avoiding adding new ongoing levels of service to maintain flexibility for the next biennium, using restricted operating funds as appropriate, like Fire Prop 1 levy. And then, you know, to begin considering what happens if funding is not continued for some of these items for '27 and '28. So we're really trying to maximize flexibility for, for, you know, city council and the budget going forward. So starting with the inclusive and equitable community goal. So there's one item for this, which is to extend the 1.0 limited term employment program coordinator for Kirkland Cares Low Income Support Program through 2026. So that would be $147,000 one time use of, of the reserves from that program. And that, and that's the funding for this. That position was hired this year and is maintaining timely and accurate processing of applications and all records and providing dedicated customer support. And I know there's conversations in finance and administration of the city to how to best manage this program going forward. Vibrant neighborhoods. So there's two items for this, which is the special event permitting software for parks. It's about $52,000 one time to implement a special event permitting software that will centralize applications. And then the funding source from that would be savings from the, from the Lake Washington School District Playfield, Playfield Utilities, which were administered by the, the city and now will be taken over by the school district, as well as some general fund balance. And then the second is to extend an administrative assistant in building a 1.0 limited term employee, about $130,000 one time, and that would come from building revenue above budget. Community safety. So we have a few for this. The first is downtown safety cameras. So this is $100,000 one time to add 10 cameras along the Fourth of July parade route. So emergency operations center staff and first responders can better identify missing persons and observe for potential or actual risk during large gatherings. And the funding source for this is interest on 2021 bond, bond proceeds for the, the Fire Prop 1 related projects.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let's pause. I think there's gonna be some feedback on that. Councilmember Tim Chisholm?
I think the intent was if we saw someone get grabbed during an event like the Fourth of July, we could like hone in. It's like right now, you know, we all have the radios when we say, you know, young child with a red jacket and we all had to go look for him, so.
Sorry. I guess I would, I would have some follow-up questions on that, like are these running 24/7, 365 days a year or only during the parade? And I would also want to know if we're creating a whole bunch of other public records requests, responsibilities where anybody can say, hey, I'd like videotape of the downtown Kirkland from Tuesday at noon till Tuesday at 2:00 PM. And I mean, I could put on my tinfoil hat and talk to you about the, the risks of this, but I guess I'd want a little more information before we.
Yeah, the good news on this is, you know, the goal is to have these in place by the next Fourth of July. And several councilmembers, you had asked that question on our call, we can definitely, there's enough time to come back and have a detailed presentation to council about those kinds of things before you decide whether you want to actually do this. But authorizing in the budget gives us the capacity, but we could certainly check in. And if you said no, don't feel like you've adequately addressed the questions, we could, we could not do it.
Okay. Those are the questions I would have. I guess I would, I would just. A lot of my questions would be around public records and whether we'd have the responsibility to start providing anybody who's doing public records requests with videotapes of our downtown locations. Thank you.
Those are good questions.
They're lining up. Deputy Mayor and then Sweet and Black and Falcon.
Thank you. One thing that I'd like to see as we're considering this budget item is what are potential alternatives? We know that fire and police and public works and others have drones. Is that something that could meet the need? If the, if the need is specific around events, is there other ways to do this versus permanent, spending $100,000 on permanent installations? Secondly, as a potential policy discussion among council, I know we had a privacy policy discussion years ago around traffic cameras. If we are looking at expanding the number of cameras that are being used, and we already have when we've looked at parks, maybe the privacy policy around cameras is something that needs to be part of our criminal justice review next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sweet?
Yeah, I have to agree. It's, I think this one needs a little bit more thought of. There are probably more cameras in downtown Kirkland on the Fourth of July than, than there are anywhere in the city at any other time. So, and I don't believe we've ever lost anybody completely. So I guess I'd, I'd need to see a little bit more data around the whys and the risks that we are actually incurring. I support the whole concept of drones or cameras or whatever for public safety. I just think that this precise, it, it's easy to target this, but it's, it's a one time, it's a one day event, once a year. And maybe we could do something, if we're worried about it this year because of the 250th anniversary, then maybe there is something that we can do temporarily for this year's event.
Councilwoman Black?
Thank you. I won't repeat what's already been said. I generally agree with the direction we're going. I just, I rose by, raised my hand just to highlight when we, I didn't know about the traffic camera privacy discussion because that was before my time, but when we did the body worn cameras, we had a discussion about policies and procedures around that to make sure we're striking the right balance. Drones, when we approved the drones for emergency response, we had a conversation similarly around that. And so all I would say is I think, I think this is something that if we, you know, if maybe not now, but maybe when we've had a chance to have the discussion around the policies and procedures that would, when it comes to retention, data retention, data access and probably any number of other related conversations, but we had these, we've had these conversations before, so kind of along the same lines. And then maybe this is something we're in a better position to say yay or nay to. Thanks.
Councilwoman Falcon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also agree with the direction that this conversation is going. I appreciate you bringing this before us because I really want to understand, you know, more what the need is and what the problem statement is and making sure that we really find the best solution that works for us, right? And this may be it, it may be something else when we're considering a lot of the things that have already been mentioned, you know, like cost, safety, privacy concerns, data storage and retention, evidence handling, you know, who can, who can see what, who can edit the video, who's allowed to view the video, how is that tracked? The same kind of conversations like we mentioned with the body worn cameras. I also, you know, similar to Deputy Mayor Arnold, I hadn't thought of the drones, but was thinking of, you know, the, the temporary cameras, for example, that we have in parks. Do we, could we get more of those temporarily? Does this need to be a permanent installation of cameras? Could it be something that's just event specific when needed to meet the need? So again, I think it's, I appreciate you bringing it forward and I also appreciate you mentioning that it's, it might be prudent to keep it kind of as a placeholder to have that conversation. So I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but I would want to make sure that we have that thorough conversation, that we really make sure that we're, that we're making the best choice for this, to meet this need. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pascal?
Thank you. Thanks. And so my, my comments are going to be less specific about this and a little bit higher level is that, you know, some of the things that I've read about here, this being one of them, the, the safety cameras is like, the context is that there's probably a number of needs and wants that we have across the city. And I'm trying to understand where this falls in those priorities and how we spend this money. I feel like we're, we have some extra money to spend, but we're looking, and we're looking for places to spend that money on rather than really kind of understanding where the needs are. And don't have that full context, right? It's like, here's the choices, but what are the other choices that we have? I, I don't see that. And so, you know, when you have, have some items on this list that are kind of questionable, it's like, well, you know, is there, is there, is there other things that we should be spending before this one? And I don't have that context and that's the type of information that I'd be looking for as a, as a decision maker. Thank you.
And my concerns about the cameras have already been reflected, so move on.
So I just want to say absolutely appreciate all the comments and we'll do the work. The, I may just respond to Councilwoman Sweet. So if Heather Kelly were here, what she'd say is it's the, the next iteration of safety that we need to think about, right? And as we've been doing things like the Fourth of July, we see other things happen in other communities, cars running into crowds, just, we're constantly trying to think ahead and keep up, which was sort of the impetus behind this. It really was community safety, but I think everything that was said is completely legit and we, we want to make sure we don't ever have an event like that. So, but I think some of the alternatives you've asked for and the information you've asked for is, is great. So thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Kevin.
All right. Thank you for those comments and questions. So the other two items here, one is a heavy rescue trailer, $46,000 one time to purchase a rescue trailer that would allow the fire department to respond to technical rescue calls with specialized equipment without using the, the ladder truck, which would reduce the, the burden on the ladder truck, which we've had issues with in recent years. And the funding there is the aid car donation reserve. And then finally, the, the fire vehicle security, which is $41,000 one time to update and upgrade the fire's current vehicle fleet with enhanced security features that will allow it to respond to vehicle, or to emergencies while still staying running with their engines and then at the same time prevent theft and allow personnel to secure the vehicles.
Thank you. Before you move on, any questions? Councilwoman Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Kevin, I didn't think about this when I read about the heavy rescue trailer, but, and you may not have the answer. Is this piece of equipment, is this allow, does this increase our capacity to respond, our fire service capacity to respond to some of the, what we're anticipating to be some larger mixed retail housing developments that are, you know, multi-story? We've talked about that in the past. Oh, we have the chief here.
I don't know that I would say that it increases our capacity, but having two separate vehicles, one that is now lighter and one that is towed by a pickup can get us, you know, multiple responses. So in that respect, it would increase our capacity.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Chief, my understanding is it's expensive to, to take the ladder truck out, correct?
Very much so. And the wear and tear on it is something that we've been dealing with.
Thank you. Go ahead.
All right. And I, I admit that I didn't have that answer off the top of my head and I was going to phone a friend, but I knew exactly to who to phone, so. All right. A couple more community safety. The increasing capabilities of MIA, so this is receiving funding from the, the recent Evergreen Health Levy, 486,000 ongoing funding for adding a firefighter and a clinical social worker, as well as a new vehicle for the team and some other costs. And that would be fully funded by the Evergreen Health Levy. The second is a wildland and brush truck purchase, which is listed here, 243,000 one time and 32,000 ongoing to purchase this type five brush truck. I think we're getting estimates that might be a little bit higher as we've kind of gone out and looked at some potential ones to purchase. But this would allow for the fire department to respond to areas that are difficult to access. It would also allow fire personnel to go to wildland fires elsewhere and deploy with this, which is reimbursable on a daily rate. So there would be some revenue associated with this. I tried to show a picture of that, but was having trouble placing it in the slide. Any questions on this?
Council questions?
And then last is a third deputy fire chief for fire prevention, which is 34,000 one time and 284 ongoing funding dedicated to support the fire prevention division and increase the department's leadership capacity and long-term resilience. So this would be in addition to and does not replace the existing fire marshal position. And that funding would come from a mixture of development services staffing reserves and general fund balance, as most of it would cover development services activity, but not all of it. So it can't be fully funded by the Development Services Fund.
I see no questions.
If, if, if that chief, the fire prevention chief is successful, what would the other two fire chiefs do? I'm just kidding. All right. Sorry.
All right. Let's move on.
All right. So we have one under support of human services. This is the severe weather voucher program. So it'd be $77,000 one time to pay for previous payments for weather activation, cold weather activation in early '25 and provide additional funds for '26. And that's coming from KTEP discretionary savings from this year. Next is the abundant parks, open spaces and recreational services goal. So there's a couple here, the Miller property donation and extension of the Rose Hill Meadows Park. We council allocated some funding for this by fiscal note earlier this year. This would be some of the ongoing and additional maintenance costs related to the park. And that would come from the park levy fund balance and some rental revenue from the new amenities. And then athletic field scheduling software. So this is about $21,000 one time funding to implement a new athletic field reservation system that will centralize applications, documentation and departmental review, which would make the process a lot nicer for folks that are looking to schedule the use of athletic fields. And that would come from a rate increase on those reservations, as well as a small use of general fund balance. Next is financial stability. So extending a one-time HR assistant through '26 at $130,000 of general fund balance and extending a paralegal through '26 at about $128,000 through 2026, also from general fund balance.
Councilwoman Pascal?
So the second, the paralegal, it's pretty obvious that that's a one-time thing where it's related to the criminal justice review. On the one-time HR assistant, is that, are those ongoing needs and we're just kind of filling that? Or is that, is there a one-time thing that we're trying to address and we feel like that will address?
It, it's likely to be an ongoing need. We, you authorized it last year for one year as a backfill. As we've talked about in the past, we're just much bigger now, so we have more vacancies that we're filling and more people turning over. So it's the first time we've added this position as we try to assess the workload. The hope is with the second year, not only will we catch up on the backlog, but we'll also have a better sense of the level of effort. But then this would be something to discuss in the '27, '28 budget, but that one is likely ongoing, but.
So it's kind of like bridging a gap.
Yeah.
Until we figure out kind of what the right resource level is.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Next is dependable infrastructure. So we have extending one-time service desk analyst and one-time network analyst, both using 2025 IT salary savings. And then extending a one-time PM web, which is a software business analyst for the CIP, about $150,000 one time to extend that position through '26. And the funding for that is salary savings, which are, that position will be charging to CIP projects. More dependable infrastructure and a very nice, beautiful picture of spring that is far away from us currently. The sidewalk grinder and cart, so $42,000 one time to replace the existing and aging sidewalk grinder, which is really heavy. And this would be a lot easier for staff to, to operate and expand the number of sidewalks that could be repaired in a year. That would use school zone safety camera reserves. The intent on this is to first and foremost target some of those areas or sidewalks that are close to schools and then school walk routes. And then the second is the resupply of salt and corrosion inhibiting liquid, which is also $42,000 one time to resupply some of the components from de-icing for, during snow and ice events in advance of the winter storm season.
City manager?
So Deputy Mayor Arnold had asked me a question about the resup-
So Deputy Mayor Arnold had asked me a question about the resupply, so I was able to talk to Chris Gavin, our deputy public works director of operations, and he said the actual, best way to say it might actually be to avoid the need to resupply. So it's actually putting a lot more supplies on site, so that when, and we have an event, we don't have to try to get someone to bring them in when we usually are competing with the other forms. So, so we didn't use it all last time, but this is just a higher stock for this winter for, so we don't have to call if, if we need it.
All right. And we have a few other notable adjustments. Here's a quick summary, and I'll just, I'll try and go through them relatively fast so we can move on to the CIP. The first is, city manager is proposing $100,000 for, to establish a tool library at the old Fire Station 27, the fire logistics center, would be startup funding, and the hope that it would be eventually supported via subscription fees. City manager, do you have anything to add on that?
Yeah, so happy to answer questions on this. So the, the 27, Station 27 would be temporary. Council might recall, we talked about the idea of asking a permanent tool library as being one of the elements of the mitigation for the Northeast Transfer Station at Houghton. I think you all saw my email. This, this has actually been bouncing around for quite some time, was put forward this year for a variety of reasons, but consistent with our solid waste management plans, our sustainability master plan, and also our focus on helping folks of lower incomes who can't afford tools, and also folks who are living in more dense areas, single family, I mean, excuse me, like studio apartments, one-bedroom apartments where they don't have space to store tools, so it's also kind of a urban implementation tool as well, so.
Councilwoman Sweet?
Yeah, I just wanted to sort of raise my hand as having, I can remember the earliest mitigation talks that we had with the county over, over in Public Works, what, seven years ago, talking about the potential for having a tool library or those kinds of facilities. For 13 years now, I have been the chair of the Metropolitan Solid Waste Advisory Committee, so I'm pretty close to this work, and I'm fearful that maybe Jenna and I haven't done as good a job as we could have, because in the course of that work, we have created the whole reuse program. We signed on to the reuse initiative. Most of the cities in the county have signed on to it. Reuse dollars are the dollars that initially funded the Shoreline Tool Library, and continue to add to it. I know that Amy, myself, I'm not sure if any of the rest of you have gone to the tool library and experienced the tool library. What I can tell you is, I've talked to people at the senior center who are eager for us to do something like this, mostly because people want to, want to use tools and build things and have a place where this actually works, because all of our retired people are sitting on buckets of tools as they move out of their garages into their condominiums, and would love to have a place to, to be able to access them. Some of the tool libraries that are out there right now are evolving into not just tool libraries, catering libraries, sewing libraries, and we've even heard people pitching kitchens, or kitchen appliances. So I've been, you know, I've been talking to a lot of people about this. This is not a new idea. I am really excited about this personally, because it's, it's my plan to be my next volunteer gig. So I just wanted to make sure that you all understood that this is not a new subject, and it is, I think, something that we, will, will serve ourselves and our sustainability program with incredibly well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Falcon?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I echo what Councilwoman Sweet said. I mean, thank you for bringing this forward. This is something that, I know I first heard of tool lending libraries maybe like a decade ago, and was super excited about the idea. I remember hearing and eagerly anticipating Shoreline's tool lending library opening, so we'd have one a little bit closer on the east side, but there currently is not a tool lending library on the east side. There's such a growing need for something like this, especially as we have more multifamily housing and, and folks don't have space to store tools, whether they're going to be, you know, painting, whether it be, you know, painting supplies and things like that, or fixing things up, or larger tools. That's something that is a growing need, and it really, we had discussions about this on our discussions on the Sustainability Strategic Plan. It helps achieve some of the goals, both for materials usage for individuals, as well as, could be potentially for small businesses in the future as well, as we talk about having deconstruction, I think I'm using the right term, but I may not be, but versus just demolishing a home, right? Where actual materials can be repurposed and not just a tool lending library. And you can, you can see some of that at Shoreline, and as, and as space allows, particularly with, potentially with NRT, I think that would be something that would be a, a really cool thing to, to see grow. But, I mean, the Shoreline Tool Lending Library, it's a poppin' place. If you guys haven't been there, I highly recommend going there. It is always busy, they're always doing new and innovative things, they have a wealth of volunteers and donations and supplies that are really helpful. So this is something that's meeting a huge need, and we're getting, we would get a lot of bang for our buck with this investment, and I'm excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tim Chisholm?
Uh, thank you. I don't understand very much about this tool library, mostly because this is one paragraph that I see within our packet. I probably would have supported an LRM about a tool library that would have got, given the council an opportunity to learn about this subject. The, the, you know, we have local businesses here that not only sell tools, but rent tools, and so whether this is a good idea is separate from the question of whether it is a function of municipal government, in my opinion. And I don't know how our local businesses are going to feel about our hardware stores, about tool lending libraries. The last project we did, when we did leaf blowers, we gave certificates for people to buy a leaf blower at our local hardware stores, at Fred Meyer, as well as the hardware store in Bridle Trails. I don't know a lot about the liability associated with this, as to renting or loaning chainsaws and other tools to our residents, and what liability we would incur with that. And I don't understand why this is a municipal function. I'm happy to learn more about it, and I would be open to learning more about it, but I, I would need a lot more information, I think, than we have here.
Councilwoman Pascal?
Thank you. Yeah, I have, I have questions about the, the tool library as well, just, I mean, some of the similar ones that Councilmember Tim Chisholm had, but just the sustainability of this, like, so this is a seed money to, to get it going, how does that, how does that work over time? You know, what are the ongoing costs? How is the Shoreline example funded? You know, I just don't know. I haven't seen, I haven't seen that. I'd like to see that, that facility. I'm open to this, I just want to understand really kind of where the city's role fits into this. And then the Station 27, I know that's temporary, and we, oftentimes in government, say things are temporary or pilots, and they turn into be permanent, so I, I want to be careful about that, because, you know, we still don't have an agreement on the, the transfer station, so I don't want to just assume that that's, it's going to, you know, go elsewhere, and that, that facility is, I think, a facility that could provide a function for many different needs, and I want to just understand what our choices are and what our needs are. So there's just a lot of, like, questions that this raises that I think are worth discussing. I just, it's really hard to respond with this line item request.
No, thank you. Just to clarify, so I think, coming back with much more information on the tool library, we can absolutely do. Clarify, the intent is never that the city in the end will operate this. The idea was that eventually it'd be a nonprofit, that's the model that's used in Shoreline, so the city might spur it, but the goal is it not to be us. So, again, we can cover that when we bring back more information.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tim Chisholm?
Uh, thank you. With regard to the public, are we going to, am I skipping ahead, public defender?
No, go ahead.
With regard to the public defender costs and the seized money from KPD, I would, I don't want to, I know we're short on time here, but maybe the, the criminal justice work program, I'd like to learn more about that.
The seizure funds and how they can be used as an example?
Yeah, I, I didn't know how they were seized and what the questions are around that. I mean, sometimes funds are seized, but they're not ours, there may be claims to them, and I don't know when those funds are definitely ours, and when they're still in dispute. But I'd also be interested to know how the funds were seized, if that's a, if that's a regular source of income. Just a little bit more information would be interesting. And then regarding the, the public defense extra money, I have a lot of questions about how the new implementation of public defender caseload minimums will affect us, and how much this is going to cost over time.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, do you need to walk us through any more on this? Does council have any more questions on this slide? Councilwoman Black?
Well, just to follow up on Councilmember Tim Chisholm, and maybe to give the city attorney a, a chance to, I, I was curious, because I note in the description that the RFP closed on October 27th. Do we have, I'm just curious now, do we have more information than we had when the, when the memo was prepared and when the packet was put together?
We do have more information. The city attorney's office leaves itself out of public defender procurement because of the conflict with the prosecutor's office, so I think Julie's in the, oh, perfect, Julie can answer you.
Hello, we were.
Even better. Sorry.
We were able to receive two RFPs, two, both for the primary public defense contract, and two for a conflict public defense contract. And they were very different in their cost proposals, so we're evaluating that right now, but regardless, there will be a, an increase, but one is really high and one is not as bad, so, but we, we want to evaluate that, so we'll be able to give you more information soon.
Okay, more to come. Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Sure. So, in the interest of time, are there specific questions? I don't have to, you know, explain each of these, but are there any specific questions from council on this slide?
No.
Okay. And this is the final one. So I'll just say, the vehicle and equipment replacement acquisitions, that's a $1.5 million of existing replacement reserves, so this is money that if, if it's collected for each of the, the vehicles at the city, if it's not spent, it goes back to the replacement reserve. So this is additional funding, it's just making sure that we have the, the budget trued up for the amount of vehicles that we actually expect to purchase. And then the Woodinville School Zone Safety Camera Program, there was an attachment that was the first contact of, or the first kind of blush at looking at what that, the cost recovery would be to provide those services for the city of Woodinville, and the goal is to, is full cost recovery for those court services. So we're still working on those exact costs.
Councilwoman Pascal?
Yeah, a question on, on the Woodinville School Zone. So we know just from experience that, that those, those cases are kind of during nine months or eight months during the year, and then they go down quite considerably during the summer. But we hire these staff for FTEs, right, for 12 months. So are you going to develop a program where it's like full cost recover, so we're not having to front, you know, money, pay money during those, those downtimes, when maybe we don't see that increase in, in citations and stuff?
Yeah, we're, we're looking at both, A, a one-time upfront implementation cost that would be charged to Woodinville, to make sure that we're covering all the upfront costs around new equipment and all, and that sort of thing. We're also looking at, okay, what is the cost of this program over an entire year, and how much revenue do we need to, to capture it? So it might not balance month to month, but overall, we'll be able to cover the cost.
Okay, so we're looking at the full, the full 12 months?
Yep.
Exactly.
Anyone else? Okay.
All right. I'll just, the really top-line takeaway here is that there was, we brought for, that there was lower budgeted fund balance in water sewer in January, or sorry, in June, and those revenues have come up a little bit higher than we expected in 2025, so that should be just below budget, right at budget. And we did take, staff worked with FCS to update the model, and basically incorporated a temporary reduction in the budgeted transfers to the capital fund from the operating fund, which is partially offset by higher capital facility charges. So we're going out for an RFP right now, and I think we just started receiving bids for the new utility rate setting contract, but we'll have a lot more information about that next year. And then finally, for health benefits fund reserve and fund balance, the health benefits fund is, the fund that we use to self-insure for health and, and health benefits, is doing better than expected. The reserve is growing more than we anticipated. We were trying to draw that down in the past few years. The balance right now is going to end, we're expecting it to end 2026 at about $6.4 million. A lot of that is driven by savings in stop-loss, basically insurance on our self-insurance costs. So the good news is that this balance could be used to, to reduce the, the percentage of, of increases to those premiums that we would charge ourselves in the '27, '28 budget. So this could lead to savings for us and save up, basically free up money elsewhere. There's some impacts, or updates on the federal impacts, I think we've talked a lot about that. The government is remaining shut down, we're seeing impacts on SNAP benefits, it's about $37 million in Washington, and Washington State has allocated about $2 million per week right now, which is just a small, you know, percentage of that. Otherwise, from the one big beautiful bill, the CDBG program appears preserved for now, but it's possible that there could be future reductions and delays, and there are some other concerns around kind of cascading effects from the county and state receiving less federal money. And then next steps, we will bring back, if needed, some updates at the November 18th Business Agenda, and then adopt the mid-buy adjustments in December. And with that, I will pass it to Veronica to go through the capital improvement program.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members, good evening, and since we were last with you in September, to review the proposed changes to the CIP, we have identified additional changes that we'd like to review with you this evening. Just looking at the summary by program here, the revised funded CIP is, the cumulative change for that is roughly $26.7 million. This is roughly about $2.8 million less than our first review. And then also on the unfunded CIP, we are increasing that by roughly $4.485 million. And then, as we reviewed in September, the change in the transportation unfunded is due primarily to the restructuring of the unfunded list and referencing the TSP for the broader list of projects. At this point, I will actually pass it over to Jessica for the presentation of some of the changes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. Just a handful of updates to bring for the public works programs in the CIP, starting with modified projects for transportation. We are starting to wrap up 100th Avenue, and we just need to recognize some additional, excuse me, external contributions from various sources, PSC, T-Mobile, and Vianlu. For Northeast 85th Street, eastbound Third Lane, this is one we also brought in September, and we're just coming tonight to adjust that amount from $269 down to $244,000. So Goat Hill Wall Safety Improvements, this was originally added as an unfunded project, and when we moved it to funded at $300,000, it was more of a placeholder. And now, we've had some time, Brian Baker, our resident Goat Hill expert, has spent some time refining that estimate, and we feel it's more appropriate at the $400,000 level. Next slide, please. For Northeast 68th Street Ped and Bike Safety Project, this is also one that we mentioned at the September 2nd study session. It has an existing budget of $550. We mentioned adding $387,000 in September as design was progressing. We are coming back tonight to request an additional $200,000 for unforeseen right-of-way scope that was required as part of a WashDOT review. This increase is due to consultant expenses for right-of-way negotiations, cost of temporary construction easements, in-house for extension of the schedule due to the right-of-way, and then we have some long-lead items specifically. then we have some long-lead items, specifically PSC street lighting. For surface water, referencing, or excuse me, recognizing a $250,000 grant that we received from King County Flood District for Silver Spurs. Houghton Park and Ride Regional Stormwater Facility, this is one that Julie Underwood brought at earlier meeting in October and mentioned that we are now combining these two projects. We will move forward with just project number SDC 181. The current planning level estimate is about $6.5 million. We would like to maintain this funding at $7.5 million, that represents 7.3 as debt. We're still in process of working on the forgivable loan agreement, and so hopefully that will offset the portion of debt once that's in place. And then we have funded about $200,000 to begin the design phase, which is already underway. So for Upper Highlands Water System, we're reflecting direction from council based on the study session on October 21st. We have updated the name of this project to include the work for the Upper Highlands Water System. We will continue to work on the direction in the resolution, including bringing refined alternatives in cost to council during the first quarter of 2026 for review. Last utility adjustment for the SCADA project, we're recognizing that there is external funding coming from Bellevue and Redmond, and we are estimating $318,000 contribution from them based on our current estimates.
Okay, and in our Parks Department, we have three modified projects. The first project is the park playground, sport courts, and amenity repair and replacement. We are recognizing a transfer of $500,000 from the ADA Compliance Upgrades Project in order to complete the castle playground and also move the Houghton Park and Play amenities. The second project is the Neighborhood Park Land Acquisition. We are recognizing an additional $1.6 million of park impact fees that we have received so far in 2025, and then two transfers to two new projects, and I'll elaborate on that on the next slide, and then also recognizing a King County Conservation Futures Award of $603,000 for the acquisition of the Fisk property. And then the third project, the Green Loop Master Plan Acquisition and Easement, also recognizing a Conservation Future Award of $1.65 million for the acquisition of Juanita Heights property. And then for new projects, we had previously brought to you the Lake Washington School District Kamaiak and Gym Expansion, however, $4.485 million of that was unsecured, and we are removing that from funded and adding it back to the unfunded CIP and maintaining the $515,000 grant that was awarded for that project. And then we're adding two new projects, referred as the Synthetic Turf Infield Pilots at 132nd Square Park, Field Number One, and Crest Woods Park, Field Number Four. Those transfers would support design work and construction work for both fields, partially funding the 132nd Square Park Field, and then also recognizing an unsecured external funding of roughly $500,000, should that not materialize, and staff will bring back to council alternatives for funding. And then the third, the Crest Woods Park would be fully funded for design and construction work.
Counselor Pascal?
Thank you, thanks for the summary here. Just fully support the turf field funding, so glad that we're trying to figure out how to move that forward, thank you to the Parks Department on that. And then on the Lake Washington School District Kamaiak and Little School Gym, appreciated the additional information in the packet about kind of the programming of that space and how it's used and what could be lost if that gym was reduced in size as part of this, the school modernization and reconstruction. Looked like it was about a 40% drop in programming capacity is based upon what staff's assessment was, so I'd really like to see options brought back later on how to, how we could participate in that, because, you know, that gym was built 50 years ago, and it's been providing 50 years of that capacity for our, our community, and, you know, that's, this is a 50-year, another 50 years that we're talking about, and so I'd really like, I think $5 million is, it's a lot of money, but, but we're thinking about it over the long term, and I'd like to figure out how we can help that. Thank you.
Counselor Black, then Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Councilmember Pascal kind of touched on, I was gonna give the city manager, can we talk a little bit about the Kamaiak and Gym expansion, what we actually expect next steps to be with the school district? What are we actually anticipating to have happen in order for us to truly see this?
So I think the question being options is important, because at some point, we have to decide if we're telling them to build the bigger gym or not, and I believe that decision they're looking for in the first quarter of next year, I don't know if you have a more specific date than that?
No more specific date than that, no.
So as the council knows, we were able to secure with the help of our state legislative delegation, the first payment, the $500,000 for the gym, and so we think that, we don't have to pay it all at once if they do do it, so we feel like we have the ability to say go, no-go, but we wanted to ask the council, you know, basically all the questions, are we trying to go, fully go, in which case, we need to bring you $4.5 million, sort of over the next five years of how to fund it, so. So those will be the next steps, we'd come back by December 9th to say, you know, hey, here are some options, are we gonna do this, are we gonna not do this, right? But the context of that, I think, is also the pool covering the pool, you know, and some of the other projects that we also don't have full funding identified for, so there's some trade-offs to that. But assuming we told them go, then the school district would start construction next year, sometime next year, including the bigger gym, and then the city would pay for the difference, so. But we can get a better timing for you from the school district, it's like when they, when they need the actual answer.
Okay, thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
Oh, thank you. As we're looking at the funding of the turf fields, a couple slides back, the funding was coming from a neighborhood park acquisition fund, and just as we look at this, I'd like to have some more information on what's available for park acquisition, given this transfer, to make sure we're going with that with our eyes open. Thank you.
All right. Go ahead.
And then on the unfunded list, we've already talked about the Kamaiak and Gym, but the second piece is a name change to the project PKC 138, and changing that name to storage building conversion to concession building. Previously, it did not include that concept of converting the current existing building and then remodeling that to be the concession building, so that's a more reflective name for the remaining work. Next slide. And, and last but not least, facilities, we have two new projects. First, the City Hall Mobile Unit Expansion, again, we brought this in September, however, we've been able to identify, reduce costs for this particular project and wanted to reflect that reduction. It will now cost an estimated $386,000. And then the second piece is the Downtown Safety Cameras, they do also get reported under the CIP, so.
We'll come back to that.
Just since this one is up, just to let the council know, we actually received, the mobile units actually parked at the Houghton Park and Ride, so if you get questions about why is there something there, that's what it is, and it will eventually get moved to City Hall, so, so it's there, you can go see it if you want to.
And that is the conclusion of our, of our presentation with 26 seconds to spare.
We did it on time. I've been sweating the last 15 minutes. Good job, guys, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, and we are going, we finished our study session, so council, if there's no objection, I'd like to go into executive session now to review the performance of a public authority, as authorized by RCW 4231101 subsection G, rather than at the conclusion of our regular meeting. Is everybody okay with that? All right, I see no objections, we're going into exec session, we expect to be back to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30. We expect to be back to reconvene our regular meeting at 7:30.
...
We are, excuse me, we are back in session following a study session to review the 2025-2026 midbiennial budget, a second update on the 2025-2030 capital improvement program, as well as an executive session to review the performance of a public employee. We are now going to start tonight's meeting with honors and proclamations, and as you can see, we have some very special people in the audience, city manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the councils. Yes, we're very excited and proud today to declare the month of November as Veterans and Military Families Month in Kirkland. This is one of our adopted 25-26 proclamation lists, but this is actually the first time that we've done it here at the City of Kirkland, so we're happy to have this as a kickoff. We have some veterans who also asked that this be done in a different location, at different times, so there will be that as well, but we're very honored that we have some veterans who are also Kirkland employees with us tonight. So I have a list that I was given, and we have even more, so we're going to have you all come up for the proclamation, and then we're going to give you a chance to say your names as well, but I have from the Kirkland Police Department, Officer Promise Jackson, Officer Dylan Pierce, Officer Patrick Chang, the Kirkland Fire Department, I have Italian Chief Seth Buchanan, and Captain Jesse Martindale, and I know we have others as well, so welcome, everybody, we're so proud of you and your service.
So, thank you for being here, and thanks for making the effort to get here, and I know you guys have busy shifts. So November 2025 is Veterans and Military Families Month proclamation, whereas throughout our nation's history courageous people have answered the call to serve and defend the ideals of liberty and justice upon which our country was founded, and whereas the City of Kirkland honors and recognizes all United States veterans for their service and sacrifice in defense of our freedom and democracy, whereas during World War II Kirkland played an important role in national defense through the Lake Washington Shipyards formerly located at what is now Carolyn Point, which employed thousands of workers who built and repaired hundreds of vessels for the U.S. Navy, demonstrating the community's spirit of service and contribution to the nation, and whereas the families of service members, including spouses, children, parents, and other loved ones demonstrate strength and resilience as they support their loved ones in uniform, often enduring long separations, relocations, uncertainty, and sometimes sorrow and loss, and whereas nationally November is designated as Veterans and Military Family Month, a time to express our deepest gratitude to those who have worn the uniform of the United States Armed Forces and to acknowledge the vital and steadfast support of their families, and whereas local agencies, including the American Legion, the King County Veterans Program, and the Washington State Department of Veterans Fairs, connect service members, veterans, and their families with housing, wellness, employment, and benefit navigation and resources, and whereas the city is committed to fostering a community that welcomes and supports veterans, active-duty service members, and their families through civic engagement, outreach, and programs that promote well-being, inclusion, and opportunity. Now, therefore, Mayor Kelly Curtis, on behalf of the city council, proclaims November 2025 as Veterans and Military Family Month in the City of Kirkland, and encourages all community members to honor, recognize, and support the veterans, service members, and their families who have given so much to service and our community and our nation. Thank you.
Did you delegate a spokesperson? Would anybody like to say anything?
Well, thank you very much, I think, I got out of everybody's way. I joined the military, I joined the Army October of 2001 for two reasons. One, I had a kid, and I had no money for college, and two, with 9/11. So I'm sure everybody here joined for similar or other reasons, and I certainly got more out of the Army than the Army ever got out of me. My veteran status here carries over, the lessons I learned, the integrity that came into this certainly carries over as a police officer, so I can't be more proud of my time in the military, and I'm super proud to work with all these guys and gals, I mean, there's, we have like thirty-two-ish veterans at the PD alone, so it's an awesome thing, so I appreciate you guys giving us the kudos, it goes a long way, and I think maybe next week we'll go to Applebee's for our free meal. Thank you, guys.
All right, council, you want to step behind? That would be wonderful. Okay, everybody slide down a little bit. All right, we are now going to move on to items from the audience. This is a time in our meeting when we normally hear from the public on matters that are not quasi-judicial or otherwise scheduled for a public hearing. We do have two public hearings this evening, they are Item 6A Budget and Capital Planning, and Item 6B Preliminary 2026 Property Tax Levy. Comments related to those items must wait until the public hearing. And all other matters, please limit your remarks to three minutes, we provide up to a total of forty-five minutes for our items from the audience, with no more than six speakers on a subject regardless of their position on the subject. If you would like to address the council during this Items for the Audience period, please sign up using the online public comment instruction link or the posted QR code in chambers. For those participating by phone, please dial *9 to be recognized to speak. Items from the audience are an important part of our business meeting, we ask that everyone be treated with kindness and respect, we ask that you please not clap or applaud or otherwise openly express your agreement or disagreement with a speaker, when that happens, even when being openly supportive of a speaker, it can be disruptive to our meeting and discourage others from sharing a different viewpoint. We discourage people from using obscenities and making personal attacks against others, and we ask that you direct your comments to council, not to staff or audience members. In addition, because they can be disruptive, signs and placards are not allowed in council chambers during our meetings regardless of content. As a reminder, state law does not allow items from the audience to be used for promoting, opposing, or discussing a candidate's campaign or ballot proposition. Kirkland prides itself on being a respectful, welcoming community, we want everyone to feel like they belong in council chambers expressing their viewpoints. Thank you. City Clerk, who do we have signed up?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At this point, we have seven guests wishing to speak, we'll take the first five in this order, Jessica Rowe virtually, Allison Warner, Alex Zimmerman, and Jeremy Eckert.
Jessica, are you there? Welcome.
I'm here, good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Good, okay. Thank you, council members, and mayor, and deputy mayor, for the opportunity to comment. I'm commenting tonight on your study, your business item regarding the JBD IV and Goodwill Site zoning. Just as a reminder, I'm Jessica from McCullough Hill, I represent the owner of the Michael site, he's not a developer, he's just the owner, and has gone through this comprehensive plan amendment process and zoning, rezoning process for the JBD IV zone over the course of the last two years. So I emailed a comment to you all, I know that it's been a busy, very busy last few weeks, and especially last night with elections, so I just wanted to highlight the key points as you may not have been able to see the letter yet, which is simply that, first of all, we appreciate all the time invested and thoughtfulness of the planning commission, the staff, and you all on this zoning process, and being really trying to be careful about doing the right thing for all of the City of Kirkland's priorities. But secondly, we support the planning commission's recommendation, we think it has merit, we've worked a lot on it, we've commented many, many times on this, so this is tonight, I think, I see in the staff report, there's a comment that the attempt is to simplify the zoning process for JBD IV. My input on that would be to go ahead and work within the parameters of the planning commission, obviously make amendments if you need to based on your priorities, but we do support the planning commission, and we think any priorities that you may have that are not reflected there can be included in the zoning, I really don't think you need a development agreement to address some of those concerns, and for example, height can be addressed through incentive zoning and things like that. So all of that to say that you have many things on your agenda, I would not rush this decision, and I would rather you go with option two, but before, if you were leaning towards option one, give us a chance to give you more input on it, because we also didn't have very much time to react to this new format that's coming in kind of late in the process. So appreciate it again, and really appreciate where everyone is coming from, but our preference would be option two or to Sigliff Planning Commission recommendation in general. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Allison.
Good evening, mayor, council members, I'm Allison Warner, I'm with Balboa Retail Partners, we own the Goodwill site. I'm also here to speak on Item 9C tonight in regard to the Wannanita neighborhood, you know, comprehensive plan that led to the recommended zoning update, and tonight, a brand-new options being presented for a new process. You know, I just want to remind everyone that we've spent the past three years working very closely and very collaboratively with city staff, with the planning commission, with all of you, we've made our best efforts to meet with as many of you as possible, have attended over eleven public meetings and community outreach meetings over the last three years, and through all of it, we've been following cities' lead, which was very much let's focus on your site, site specifically. We submitted a project information sheet back in 2023 to help inform the comprehensive plan process, neighborhood update process that lasted throughout 2024, that resulted in a policy that then, at the beginning of this year, we've been working closely on how do you enact zoning policy, or how do you craft zoning policy that enacts, enacts the comprehensive plan policy in a way that we actually have a feasible, achievable project in the near term. We fully support planning commission's recommendation, we understand that there are still some outstanding issues and questions that could be resolved, we're here, as we have been for the last three years, to work through that collaboratively, to help answer those questions, and help craft zoning code that can address those. We believe that this issue really can be addressed through the site-specific zoning amendments that have been proposed. We don't recommend the development agreement, it feels like that is going backwards, and quite frankly, it would be twelve months, and we'd be right back in front of city council discussing all of the same exact issues, as the development agreement would likely very much mirror exactly what the current request for zoning code amendments looks like. You know, beyond that, I think similar to the prior speaker, if you guys are interested in pursuing the new option that's being presented tonight, we request that you take your time with that, and that we be involved in the process and help inform it, but really, we're here to request that you stick with the process that has been city-directed for the last three years, and move what's at the finish line forward. I also submitted a letter this morning, it was long, it was detailed, we had three business days to review what's been presented and figure out how to respond to it, so I realize you probably haven't had a chance to go through it, I've also brought hard copies that I'll leave here in case that's easier for you than reading what I emailed, so, thank you.
Thank you. Alex Zimmerman.
Hi, my name is Alex Zimmerman, and I want to bring something to you, what is don't have analogy in state Washington, maybe in America too, so I explain to you what's going on. Bellevue prosecute me for pub second-degree trespass misdemeanor, case go, three hundred pages, go for two years. Five times they prosecute me, five times case is dismissed. So this don't have history in state Washington. By definition, people who doing this, there's almost dozen judges, city attorney, and public defender, who have one fired seven times, nothing happened. This case so unique, so you cannot imagine how this possible, you know, because statistically in king country, for each misdemeanor case, you spend one hour. Bellevue Community Court Tuesday in library, for one hour, make six, seven misdemeanor cases. This a terror, it's a Nazi Gestapo terror, what is they cut against me because I go candidate for Mayor Robinson, against Mayor Robinson. Situation unique, but they show how deep Nazi Gestapo fascism we have, and by definition, it's more dangerous than Gestapo in KGB, because Gestapo in KGB don't have constitution like we have. This number one. Number two, they cut my statement of election, because I go against Mayor Robinson, it make only one-
Point of order.
Mr. Zimmerman, you cannot talk about a campaign.
Campaign finished.
No, it's not over, it hasn't been verified, you may not speak about it.
No, but-
Mr. Zimmerman?
I don't understand, yesterday is finished.
Stop.
What do you mean, stop? You're wrong.
You may not discuss campaigns.
I don't discuss campaign, everything's stopping yesterday, what are you talking about?
Mr. Zimmerman, I will call a recess if you do not move off of this.
You can do in everything, election's stopping yesterday.
Okay, I am now calling a five-minute-
It's a stupid, absolutely. It's a stupid, absolutely.
In the audience, city clerk, who did we have next?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Jeremy Eckhart, followed by Lisa Berenson, Heidi Shore, Meredith Everest.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, thank you. My name is Jeremy Eckert. I am land use counsel for the Goodwill site, and I'm also an adjunct land use law professor at Seattle U Law, John Witch School. I work with many real estate developers around the region to do exactly what's proposed at these sites, which is comprehensive plan amendment. Let's develop some zoning regulations, and let's provide housing, which is much needed. We have two requests for you on item 9C. Everything that Jess just said, everything that Allison just said. But the two requests are: Work with the Goodwill and Michael sites to finalize the PC-reviewed zoning code for the sites. We can finalize and wrap everything up in a week. We're just about there, on the one-yard line. And two, do not support the city manager-initiated process for these two sites. It's a step backwards. So here's why I'm making these requests. As you all know, when you hear these meetings all the time, we're facing a housing crisis, and we need to provide housing now, especially affordable housing. At the same time, this has changed right in somebody's backyard. And so we get it. This is tough. We see this everywhere across the region. I wanted to drop a few key points. The first one is that requiring a development agreement for these two sites would really make Kirkland an outlier in the Puget Sound region. Other neighboring jurisdictions have dealt with the exact same issues that are before you on these two sites, and they've been solved through the zoning code. But what's unique about these sites, opposed to other places, is that they've been subject to three years of scrutiny and review. We know the issues, and we know the solutions to the issues. And the PC zoning code does a good job of addressing it. It's not perfect, but it does good. And what I'd encourage you to do is not let the perfect be the enemy of the good, especially when it comes to providing housing during our housing crisis. Number two, requiring a development agreement is inconsistent with what we've been seeing in the city of Kirkland. And I worked with council member Tim Chisholm on the bridle trails issue, the Planning Commission before you all. Bridle trails was tough. Multiple site owners, lots of new growth. We wanted to have plans to go pedestrian pathways. We did this all through the zoning code without a development agreement. We put plates into the zoning code to make things work. Same solutions could be applied here. And we can all agree that these sites are not anywhere near as complicated as the Kraken facility or Google headquarters, Google campus. The last point that I wanted to leave you with is that the process needs to be fair. Both of these parties, Goodwill and Michaels, spent considerable time and resources during a three-year process, participating in meetings, late-night meetings, and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on consultants to bring information to the city. To require a new process at this point, which could add a year or more, is just fundamentally unfair. We know the issues, we know the solutions. If we could just work together, we can solve this, and I do mean this, in a week, just sitting down and hammering out the zoning code. So again, I'd please ask you to have staff work with us to come back with a PC-recommended zoning code and get it done. Thank you.
All right, Lisa.
Hi there. I am Lisa Berenson. So first of all, regarding the Michaels and the Goodwill site. What's going to happen to Michaels? What's going to happen to Goodwill? What's going to happen to the people who use these two retail properties every single day? Number two, we have gone over this numerous times. What the developer wants to do at the site at Michaels is too high, it's too big en masse, and the housing that's needed, it is not affordable by any means, none at all. It is market-rate housing, and what you're calling affordable housing is not affordable. It does not meet the correct AMI. Number two, you're going to take away the sky. You're going to overshadow what's going on with the Columbia Athletic Club. You're going to kick out the one successful Indian restaurant that finally made it in that one corner that has been cursed, because everything else that's gone in there has gone out of business. Number two, what's going to happen to Goodwill? Okay, you're going to add all this housing to Goodwill. It's across the street from an elementary school. The traffic at that intersection is already bad enough. And you're referring to Bridle Trails as a successful housing project? It's a disaster. The massing of that project is so overstated compared to everything else that's around it, and then all the retail that's around it that is one level. I'm hearing rumors, I used to work for Ace. I know those owners. They are what? The rumor is that they're all going to get kicked out of the rest of that property to build more housing. Where are they going to go? We need everyday retail for everyday people. And if you're going to build what you built in Bridle Trails, uh-uh, not in Kirkland, not at Goodwill, and definitely not at Michaels, not.
All right, next we have Heidi.
Hi, you guys. I'm just here to say, I just got the packet information of the change to the city manager proposal. So I haven't really digested all of it, but I'm of two minds. I support moving forward with what's already been hammered out. I really do. I see the need for housing. I see that people have worked hard on this. It's not perfect. There are things that, in my world, I would have different. And I also really support form-based zoning across the city so that we're not playing favorites, that we're not, that there's consistency, so that developers can come in and know what they're going to get, that citizens can know what's possible in a place. I think it would be really helpful to move on that as well. So I don't know what to say to you other than that I'm of two minds, but I support moving forward. And I don't know that requiring... Oh, the one thing I wanted to say is that I really would like that retail really be required on the ground floor so that we have not lost access to some things. Maybe it's not retail the way we always have seen retail, but small retail, just an ability for citizens to have something on the ground floor that's interesting, that we can go to, that we can do cafes or whatever. And I have a Green Loop ask. I encourage the council to allocate CIP funds for park acquisition in Wanita. Thank you all.
Thank you. Meredith.
Good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, and council members. My name is Meredith Everest, and I'm with Bayless Architects. I'm the architect who has worked with the applicant for the Wanita's site amendment request. And I really just wanted to recap some of the development opportunity that we've studied with the client. Essentially, the parcel is about 52,000 square feet, so that's 1.2 acres. There is a wetland adjacent to this property, but the wetland buffer encumbers the property with basically a 110-foot setback from the wetland. So that essentially leaves approximately about 52% of the site is developable area. And so with that 52%, we have studied some development opportunities that could potentially yield about 150 units. And in addition to the units, we do have some opportunity for retail. We're looking at about a 17-foot wide frontage for both pedestrian amenities and widening of sidewalks. So we feel like there is a development opportunity that can really benefit the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, city clerk, who's next?
We have one final guest wishing to speak, David Haynes, virtually.
All right. David, are you there? David, are you there? Is he muted? David, go ahead. David, you're muted. I can't hear you.
All right, thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
David, want me to-
Before you begin, I just want to caution you. We've had six speakers on the Michael and Goodwill site.
Okay, no problem. I really called in because we need legislation to assist Seattle in helping their response to the drug epidemic, because Kirkland right now is the only drug clinic. And when those troubled souls leave, they usually, some of them, not all of them, trash that bus stop repeatedly every week. And they just roamingly go back to the youth district, or they stop off in places. So I think that we need legislation that Seattle would pay for and that maybe you all should discuss with Redmond and have like an authorized encampment that could like force people to break their addiction and be escorted to that encampment instead of allowed to get on the bus and bother other people. And anyway, the other thing I called in about is there's a really great asphalt drive road up Goat Hill that they did a great job on. And I just wish they would have been charitable and gone all the way up that gravel road to Wanita Heights Park so you don't have to kick up the gravel. And I know it was kind of expensive, you know? And they did a really great job in Wanita Beach, right at 120th Street and 120th Place and 97th, except for one thing. The road rage that comes in there and takes that wide turn, when they go straight towards that senior living development and then veer to the left at almost a 45-degree angle, they've pushed the curb so close into the road that when the people have to walk up to it and contend with a construction flag, there's still a vulnerability of not calming the road as much as it needs to be. Because we don't really have like pedestrian-centric, resident-friendly neighborhoods. And anyway, I just want to get back to like the homeless crisis and the housing crisis and the needs for 21st century, first-world-quality housing build-outs and commercial buildings that go higher in the levels for a more robust space and livable amenities that improve everything, mental health and physical health, that a lot of people don't realize we should get because they're sitting in traffic upset about like antiquated stoplights that haven't been updated. But, you know, when you see a bunch of drug addicts who are really like troubled souls, and horrible things have happened and things that they do, when they're allowed to just go to the clinic and then pad the Medicaid cost and stay unable to work and take the only housing that's available for innocent homeless, they're dragging the whole system down. And they're not required to break their addiction. These case managers are just latching on to them to make sure that they keep their signature every six months. But when it comes to breaking the addiction, it's more voluntary. And I'm telling you, if you have like an authorized encampment on the east side that forced people to break their addiction, if they're like exempted from jail, bothering people in the business district, and somehow they get to go to the drug clinic for one to 14 days with some serious behavioral crisis that sometimes the trashed-
David.
-bus stop.
David, you're-
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, city clerk, anyone else?
No other guests wishing to speak during the segment.
Thank you. All right, we are closing items from the audience. So we are now moving on to our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a combined public hearing on the budget and capital planning for three items. Item 6A is a public hearing to receive public comments on the 2025-2026 mid-biennial budget. Item 6A2 is a public hearing to receive public comments on the 2025-2030 capital improvement program. And item 6A3 is a public hearing to receive public comments on the 2025-2030 transportation improvement program. I will now open the public hearing on these three items. City manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, to give you a brief overview of each of these items is our financial planning manager, Kevin Pellstring, and then we'll have the public hearing.
Thank you, city manager. Madam Mayor, deputy mayor, members of council. Just have a couple slides tonight on this combined public hearing. So we'll go through, ah, thank you. Small detail. So this will be a combined public hearing on these three items, and then we'll open it up for public comment. So here is the remaining mid-biennial budget review timeline. We had a study session tonight. We started to review the mid-by adjustments and recommended mid-by service packages. And on the 18th, may return with a business agenda item for any follow-up. And then council will adopt the 25-26 mid-by adjustments on December 9. Here's a brief summary of all of the proposed 25-26 mid-biennial adjustments and their funding sources. So this totals about $6 million in proposed adjustments, much of it coming from not new revenues, but reallocating existing reserves or savings from '25 so far. You can see more details in the study session packet, including proposed service packages and other adjustments. This also notably includes just over $1.06 million of King County Parks Levy following the renewal of the King County Parks Levy in 2026. Second, on the capital improvement program, the CIP update. Again, the first CIP update was presented to council on September 2. There was a second update presented tonight at the study session, and then there'll be a third update on the November 18 packet, if needed. And then all of the CIP memos are available on the city website at that hyperlink. Total adjustments for the CIP since adoption in December 24, total $285 million in the funded CIP and $708 million on the unfunded since the December adoption. And then finally, the 25-30 transportation improvement program. So this is, it follows the transportation elements of the 25-30 CIP update, but it's required by state law that cities must adopt a TIP each year to plan transportation investments, and it's required for funding. So a project must be listed in the TIP to be eligible for state and federal transportation grants. And adoption, the proposed TIP is tentatively scheduled for January 6, 2026, and then will be transmitted to the State Department of Transportation, PSRC, neighboring agencies in King County. And again, the remaining budget calendar is there. Adoption for the CIP and budget, mid-by budget adjustments will be December, and then adoption of the updated 25-30 TIP will be January 2026. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Council, any additional questions for Kevin? Councilor Black?
One really quick. Kevin, can you go back to the slide with the capital? Yeah, that one. And then on the transportation line. Just for, that's a big number on the change there. Can you very briefly explain to, mainly to our residents and audience members about that change?
Yes. So this update is reflecting a lot of the changes that are coming from the recent Transportation Strategic Plan adoption from last year. So there's been a lot of wholesale changes in how we show the unfunded programs and a lot of the planned programs for the next six years. So that's why there's such a big change on the unfunded side.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Okay, we are now going to call upon members of the public who signed up to address the council. Please limit your remarks to three minutes for all the combined items. During this time, you are limited to only speaking about the topics of the public hearing. And as a reminder, that's the mid-biennial budget, the capital improvement program, and the transportation improvement program. City clerk, who do we have first?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have three guests wishing to provide testimony. Alex Zimmerman, Christina Mendieta online, and Liz Hunt.
Alex, and you must speak to the topics at hand.
Transportation, don't worry. Hi, my name is Alex Zimmerman. I want to speak about transportation.
Point of order.
Councilor Tim Chisholm?
This is not germane to the public hearing.
I don't understand. Were you talking about transportation?
Continue, Mr. Zimmerman.
I can speak?
Yes.
Thank you very much. About this happiness transportation, I lived here for 40 years, make me sick. From my understanding, you all of King County council, all city council- From my understanding, you all, of King County Council, all city council, you are killer, you are bandido, you kill people, you kill Americans.
Mr. Zimmerman, you're not, you need to speak to the topics at hand, I do not hear your-
Transportation, only about transportation.
The transportation improvement program.
Exactly, improvement program, so this is exactly what is, I want to explain to you, because I have a couple examples, what to show, what is going on. Fifteen years, we have red camera, so approximately, I give you information only about Bellevue, Bellevue Red Camera, I speak in Bellevue Red Camera for 15 years.
Mr. Zimmerman, we do not want to hear about Bellevue, we want to hear about Kirkland's transportation program.
Okay, Kirkland Transportation Program have same problem like half everybody, so when I talking about you, I can talking about red camera, and right now, next step is will be speed camera, and next step is will be... What is we doing with transportation, we kill people, is what is happening now.
Mr. Zimmerman, you are excused, you are not speaking to the items that we are discussing during the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, there's nothing changed, it will be.
All right, next we have Christina, and did you tell me she's virtual?
Yes, Christina Mendieta.
Christina, are you there? Christina?
I apologize, it took, zoom a moment.
No worries.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, my name is Christina Mendieta, I serve as Director of Public Affairs at Kindering, which is a nonprofit that was founded more than 60 years ago, right here on the east side. Each year, Kindering provides pediatric therapies, early learning, and family supports for thousands of children with diverse needs, including 500 of Kirkland's children. As you can conduct your mid-biennial review, I want to thank you for supporting our programs and urge you to continue investing in young children with disabilities. Our Families in Transition Program serves children experiencing housing instability, as many of you know. Through pediatric therapies and case management, this program helps children make developmental gains while simultaneously connecting caregivers with housing, employment, and essential resources. Last year, 83% of children served, made measurable progress toward their developmental goals, and this year alone, our team has provided 432 hours of service, which is 156% of our contract goal. In partnership with KidVantage, we distributed $170,000 worth of essentials, like diapers and baby formula and clothing, T-Side families through Fit, and our other services. We also want to thank you for prioritizing childcare and early learning. Kindering's childcare and preschool consultation program strengthens Kirkland's early learning ecosystem by helping preschool teachers and childcare providers meet the developmental and behavioral needs of their students. Last year, 95% of children served, were retained in their early learning programs, which is an important equity outcome, especially given the fact that black boys and children with disabilities are most at risk of preschool expulsion. We also wanted to share that we see growing needs among immigrant, refugee, and asylum-seeking families that we're serving. We continue to reassure families that we never collect immigration information, and we have expanded outreach by hiring a bilingual family engagement specialist, who is focused on racial equity. Also, our multilingual, trauma-informed Families in Transition Team provides care in English, Spanish, Russian, Ukrainian, and Arabic, and collaborates closely with culturally-specific organizations for coordinated support. I want to share that to thank you for your investments, and also to thank you for your ongoing leadership and ongoing commitment to children of all abilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Liz Hunt, Kirkland resident, thank you, council members and staff, and I wanted to also thank the staff for the detailed presentation about the mid-biennial budget adjustments, and your hard work on managing our city's budget. Two comments, the first relates to the projected budget deficit looming upon us.
This public hearing is to receive public comments on the preliminary 2026 property tax levy.
So, to give you a brief overview of this before the public hearing, we have our Finance and Administration Director, Michael Wilson.
A little assistance bringing the slides back up. Just have a, thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Have a brief presentation on the property tax for 2026. As, as you know, state law allows for a 1% optional increase in property tax, and this was, this has been included in the 25-26 approved budget for Kirkland.
Michael, why don't you move the mic closer? Yeah, thank you.
Yes, as I was stating, the state law allows for a 1% increase in property tax every year, and Kirkland has included this. The state law limits it to the lesser of 1% or an inflation indicator, this will be up in just a moment, and the first slide I have shows what the inflation has been, over 1%, and so we're limited to the 1% increase. Let me go forward. Best laid plans, we have the presentations right in a row, so we can zip right into the next one. Inflation has been, the indicator is at 2.6%, and so we are limited to 1%. Kirkland is one of 10 taxing districts for the properties in the city of Kirkland, and you can see on this slide that for 2025, the city of Kirkland is just under 12% of the total property tax bill. This slide shows the difference between the final 2025 property tax levy and the proposed 2026 preliminary levy. It's about one, a little over $1.1 million, including the 1% increase, the new construction change, and prior levy- Here's kind of the recap of what the preliminary 2026 property tax levy will provide. The new construction is highlighted in yellow because we put in a greater amount, greater request to the, to King County, because if we ask for too little, they'll give us exactly what we ask for, if we ask for a greater amount, they will limit us to the legal limit, and right now, they haven't finished the assessed valuation of new construction, and so we know there's a little bit more coming, but we need to have this approved by council before December 1st, because we submitted to King County on December 1st. So, the elements of the 2026 preliminary include the 1% increase, which is about $437,000, new construction is actually about $740,000, we have re-levis, and we getting a little bit every year from tax increment financing, from the tax increment area. Our levy rate with the levy amount of just over $45 million would be about 86 cents per thousand, and this is the history of the property tax rates in the city of Kirkland. At this point, the next steps are public comment, and then adopting the preliminary ordinance at the next council meeting.
Great, thank you. Any questions from council? All right, I see none. I will now call upon members of the public who signed up to address the council. Again, please limit your remarks to three minutes, and as with the last hearing, during this time, you are limited to only speaking about the property tax levy. So, City Clerk.
Madam Mayor, we have no guests wishing to provide testimony tonight.
All right, is there anyone that wishes to address council? On this issue? Okay, so this public hearing is now closed, the council again will consider all public comments received on this, this issue, including those submitted in writing, and we are now moving on to the consent calendar. Before we have a motion, I'd like to ask Deputy Mayor Arnold to present the audit of accounts.
Thank you, Mayor, we had payroll in the amount of $9,239,746.89, and bills in the amount of $10,898,592.71.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So, moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Sweet, second by Councilmember Black, excuse me. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent calendar is approved, 7-0. We are moving on to our first business item, 9A. Our first item is a briefing on the 2025 critical area ordinance amendment. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you may have noticed our tables, this topic, the critical area ordinance amendment update, has got a cast to come present to you, so I have our Deputy Director Allison Zeig, our Planning and Building Director, Anna Weinstein, and we have, wait, I think, wrong topic there, okay, so, and then Anna Heckman, and Jennifer Andor, our two senior planners are going to make the presentation, and we're looking for feedback on this, and then it's coming back to the council for future action in one of the last two council meetings.
All right, welcome everybody.
All right, thank you, City Manager, Madam Mayor, Deputy and council members, let's see if this works. We have 11 slides for you. I'll quickly go over general public feedback we've received on the project, touch on chapter 85 overview, and then we want to reserve the majority of the time for chapter 90 and RMZ overview. So, since our last briefing with council, we've met with neighborhood associations, MBACs, the development community, and also received comment from community members, and a lot of the feedback for 85 and 90 overlaps quite a bit, so- ... requirements in the code, simplifying it, reducing costs for development, and comments for 90 also focused on investment in the environment and making sure that Kirkland's sustainable. And for 85, we've been lucky to have continued positive feedback from the state, particularly with regards to our review requirements and peer review, and that's for not only our existing code, but also the draft code. And for chapter 85, we also met with one of the city's geotechnical consulting engineering groups, and that was really important, because we received all of this feedback from the community and from the perspective of development that really wants that flexibility that we want to build in, but it was important to have a subject matter expert review the code as well. We need to make sure that it maintains safety standards for the public and for property, and with all that said, we've landed on these four main areas for updates for 85 with the planning commission recommendations. So, we have an adjustment to the moderate landslide hazard definition, there's now a slope height, minimum slope height included, so that's going to reduce the amount of landslide hazard across the city, which equates to less permitting. We also have two new sections focused on exemptions that did not exist in the current code, so the current code does not have any exemption sections. First one is geotechnical, so those are low-risk projects that really can be done safely without any sort of geotechnical report or investigation. You have to report, repair your deck, or you want to put in an AC unit on your property, need to work on your utilities that are on the property, things like that. We also have a peer review exemption, so these are still low-risk, but a little bit higher of a scope, so it may need the review, but it doesn't need an applicant-funded peer review on top of it, so if you want to put in a new deck, retaining walls, a shed in your backyard, that type of project. And then the last one we have on here are vegetation requirements, and that's really a clarity issue. We, the existing code touches on trees in a variety of different chapters, and so you kind of have to hunt through all of them, so we created some code lines specifically for 85, and then consolidated into chapter 95, which is our tree management chapter, so that way for staff or anyone really using the code, you have a question about a tree, it inherently makes sense to go to the tree chapter. So, that's really all I have, I have one slide for 85, kept it very brief. Mayor, I don't know if you want to stop for comments, or we can-
I think I will, see if, but, council has any questions on chapter 85? No.
No. All right, I will hand it over to Anna for 90.
Here's the rest of the story. So, for chapter 90, which is streams and wetlands, environmental portions of the critical area code, I wanted to give you a quick update on the major decision that Planning Commission made and brought forward, and it is a little different than what was advised, but we feel like it's a solution that balances a lot of Kirkland's needs. So, just so you know, Planning Commission did not go in- These are a lot of the questions that they provided to us, and we were able to answer them, and hopefully I'm able to answer most of them today. One of them, we're not going to go over, stream types in Kirkland, there were some questions on what a perennial stream versus a seasonal stream was, and some of the changes that could be made there. So, I want to take a moment and acknowledge that WDFW provided an extensive list of comments, very thankful for that, and the Snoqualmie tribe also provided an extensive list of comments. They were very parallel to each other. Unfortunately, I missed the email, and the Snoqualmie comments did not get provided in the public hearing, so I just want to make sure that that's acknowledged. The main comments that they provided was they want the stream buffers expanded, and when we talk about long-range, long-term goals, that is the best available science to do, and we'll go into some more on that in a little bit. The minimum buffers that they would recommend is 100 feet, and that is for that clean water, best available science thought process. If you dump pollutants on the ground, it takes 100 feet for them to travel and get cleaned out before they go into the stream, and we'll talk about some of, some of that a little later. They also provided concerns about some of our existing code, and a lot of these concerns correlate with our existing buffers. If our existing buffers were larger, these issues wouldn't be as big of an issue for them. And then there were clarity edits and definition and best available science updates, we're able to incorporate those easily, very thankful that they caught some of those. As you guys know, this is a very large code, and it's easy to get caught in the middle of it. So, what are other cities doing? We are all on the same page of moving forward, having a lot of change and a lot of updates. I want to put a caveat on this, that this is not what's actually happening anymore. Every day, something else is changing. We're coming to planning, you know, we came to Planning Commission, this was all what we were able to provide to Planning Commission. Back in July, when we had this data, Kirkland's existing buffers at 133 and 66 were higher up on the list, and a lot of cities were proposing updates that were at or just below ours. Since then, when they brought their, got their comments from the tribes in WDFW, a lot of them have upped their buffers. They've also included things that Kirkland included in 2017. For example, all of the F streams that have 200 feet, most of those allow a 25% reduced buffer, down to 150 feet, if there's improvements in the vegetation. You remember, there's that quality versus quantity, and so that's that quality portion. A lot of cities split their end streams, their non-fish-bearing streams, into perennial and seasonal buffer changes. The 100 feet is what will be recommended to us at all times, even if it is a seasonal stream. Those are the hardest ones to justify, because those are the people that call in and say it's a ditch, it's dry most of the year, but if it's still a connected waterway, it's considered a non-fish-bearing stream. And we do have some cities up there that they were able to state that it didn't impact private property- private properties by expanding some of the buffers because they either had wetlands around the fish-bearing streams, or it was public property around a lot of those streams. So, expanding those buffers doesn't make as big of an impact. In Kirkland, we do have a lot of private properties on those streams. So, that's just a quick summary. And again, those aren't set in stone, and, you know, very few of those have gone through for adoption. So, a quick stream buffer option overview. We have 25,000 plus or minus properties in Kirkland. A little under 10% of those are on streams right now, both fish-bearing and non-fish-bearing. The riparian management zone option that we proposed, if you take a look at this, we have that in a dotted line labeled RMZ that's 150 feet out from the non-fish-bearing stream. And on the right-hand side, we have what our existing buffers are, 50-foot with that expanded 66-foot buffer, where if you're in the dark green area, you would have to do quality improvements, minimum vegetation standards if you were going to do construction. On the right-hand side, the buffer is significantly expanded to 100 feet, and that outer buffer would be 133 feet. And so, we have a property, like that green square property there, that is considered in the riparian management zone. There'd have to be some trees retained on site. Development wouldn't be impacted as far as how much, but we would ask them to be developing environmentally friendly. We have some other properties, example, oh, in the riparian management zone properties, if we did the riparian management zone, we would be adding 1,326 properties to the regulations. For areas where we would have future development that is impacted by the recommended buffer, that 100 to 133-foot buffer, we'd be adding 984. So, almost 1,000 more properties would be in that critical area requirement where they would be limited in what they can develop. And that's a good example where the houses in the outer riparian management zone, or the outer buffer. If we were to expand buffers, we would add over 1,000 properties that would be considered non-conformant. And these are properties that at this time, there could be development, their riparian, or their riparian area is on their property, but it doesn't impact their home, and now their home would be fully impacted, and they would be restricted in what they could develop. They'd have to maintain their same foundation. And then we have already non-conforming areas. And we have in our city at this point in time, after our 2017 expansion, we have 1,200 houses that are considering, considered non-conforming. So, it's just a quick review of some of the impacts and how many people that would impact. The riparian management zone option, if we were to go with that, we would want to just make sure everyone knows tree protection standards would be increased, and we wouldn't have any buffer interruptions. So, for example, those properties across the street would have to conform with critical area tree protection. So, they're not able to just remove trees because they want to. We always would allow removals for hazards and nuisances, and they would be required to replant. And that's also something we don't require for everyone when they remove a tree, under normal circumstances. Under normal circumstances. And then when they go to redevelop, if they were to increase their net imperious surface by over 1,000 square feet, or if their improvements exceed 50% of the replacement cost of the existing improvements on the property, which is something we use for a lot of code as far as triggering when we require additional guidance, that's when those low-impact development issues would be triggered. And then we gave a quick rundown of those two options. The simplest thing to do is to expand the buffers. We just have to change a couple of numbers in the critical area code. However, we don't believe that actually is a solution to the problems that are identified. We're talking about trying to clean up our water and trying to improve our habitat. And we have development, we have over 600 properties that are less than 50 feet from our streams. And we know already all the properties that are impacted by our critical areas. We know that that expanded buffer option, it will have a slower measurable change because we don't do much renovation. We have five, maybe six, applications a year for development. It'll take a long time to get through 2,000 properties to be able to have that impact on improving the riparian area buffer just as it is. The interrupted buffer rules exempt a lot of properties. So, if we expand the buffers, we increase the amount of work we're doing to try to figure out what are the interrupted buffers are and who actually is impacted and who isn't. And then, yeah, we believe that increasing those buffers will likely discourage development, which then doesn't allow us to go in there and help try to create change to improve the quality of those buffers. That 150 riparian management zone option, we're leveraging the best available science that is provided, that is forestry-based from WDFW, and using some of the urban research that we have. We have urban forestry research that connects trees to stormwater. We know that tree canopy is something that we can put in even when there is invasive species that we're fighting against. So, we can do that for habitat and water quality, and it's already in our code. We're just expanding it. We believe that we can create measurable change at a faster rate. We're currently measuring our water quality right now. We have a great program for monitoring, and that's part of this critical area requirement. We're showing that we do have some positive change, but our creeks and streams are in poor condition. You know, we all know about Waneta Bay and Waneta Creek. We need to try to make change faster. So, this would be a regulatory way to help out with that. We don't have interruptions or flexibility with regards to the interrupted buffers, and we're trying to help balance both our environment as well as the other regulations we're trying to do in Kirkland. That's a quick summary, and I know many of you have questions, and we will do the best we can to answer them.
Thank you, Anna. Counsel? It's going to take one minute. Councilmember Black.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, Anna, just a couple of questions, just to help clarify the whole framing of the issue. So, question number one, is doing nothing an option vis-à-vis the Department of Fish and Wildlife and the state?
From the Fish and Wildlife.
And can I, can I modify my, is it a reasonable, is doing nothing a reasonable option for the city of Kirkland?
My professional opinion, it's not.
Yeah.
And the reason is, is we can't back up at this time with the data we have, that the changes we made in 2017 are enough. And the new best available science that has come out between 2017 and now pushed towards doing more. And so, I think if we were to do nothing, we would have a lot of justification to do in an appeal. And I don't think it would pass.
So, the city gets sued by the state of Washington, effectively?
I do not have enough experience.
You're getting a nod.
To make that comment.
Yeah.
Okay, so we've got to do something. So, now the question is, what are we going to do? I think if we went back, and we don't have to, go back to the slide with the map of the different properties. But I, what I gleaned from that is, under the simplest approach, which is just extend the stream buffers, you're going to have, we're going to have properties that would otherwise be in the riparian management zone, but they are instead, if we just did the simple approach, they are going to actually be in the stream buffer.
Yes.
They're going to be non-conforming, and any development is going to, they'll be essentially restricted from doing any development.
Yeah, there's, we do have.
They're actually like, those three homes that are kind of at the end of the cul-de-sac on the lower right, I think are the homes I'm thinking of. They're the ones that in the state-recommended approach, they would become non-conforming.
Yes.
And the ability to do anything with those properties in the future that's significant would be heavily restricted.
Correct.
Under what we're, what the Planning Commission and staff is proposing, those three properties would be in a riparian management zone. Development would be allowed, but with some strict requirements around things like preserving trees, low income, sorry, low income, low-impact development methods. So, the balance we're striking here is that we're still trying to do, use best available science to provide the environmental protection while balancing that against what would otherwise be potentially some pretty major impacts to some homeowners.
Correct.
Okay. And Anna, did you, you've met with the planning, in the interim, since the memo was prepared, you met with the Planning Commission. And I want to make sure that, did you present what the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Did anything new, sorry, I guess I'm saying, we've all read the materials, and it might have been 400, 300 pages or something? I don't know what it was, but it was incredible. Anything new from the Planning Commission? I'm not sure I got. If you said it, I missed it.
No, the questions I posed at the beginning were questions that Planning Commission had asked, some of them during the meeting, and we were able to answer some of them right before the meeting. So.
But they're still recommending the riparian management zone as the best alternative?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pascal. Sorry. Can I, I was just going to respond quickly and let you know who can appeal the Critical Areas Ordinance. So, it's an appeal to the Growth Management Hearings Board, essentially alleging that the, that the Critical Areas Ordinance doesn't comply with the law. So, the Growth Management Hearings Board would evaluate whether it was consistent with the comprehensive plan and the requirements for best available science. And anyone can appeal to the Growth Management Hearing Board that was involved in the proceedings at the, in front of the city, or the state can also appeal them. So, it's not just the state that could do it. It could also be one of the tribes or anyone else who provided comment about it.
Good, that's good extra context, thank you.
Councilwoman Pascal.
Thank you. Thanks for the information and update. We received a letter from the Master Builders Association that was in the packet, and I was, I was wondering if you could just kind of comment high level, did, are these proposed regulations addressing most of their comments, or are there a few outstanding comments that we just weren't able to address?
That's a great question. We did address those for Planning Commission at the hearing. Master Builders got their stuff in time for us to address them. And we were able to address most of their comments. The biggest one that sticks out in my mind is the site potential tree height. They wanted to make sure that that was clear and simple and, of course, minimized.
And then, when, when properties become non-conforming that aren't today, would you, would you agree that that, does that, does that change the property value of those properties?
I don't want to comment on change in property values.
I could jump in, Councilmember Pascal, and just say conclusively what it, what it does do. It does make redevelopment or alterations more difficult, so it makes it a heavier lift. So, if there's a legally non-conforming property, we do have flexibilities that exist in our code that we're proposing to retain, that do allow minor additions. It's very stringent and prescriptive about where those additions should be, and it's also going to require that they then do a lot of restoration for the buffer on their property. So, it would certainly make redevelopment more expensive for the property owner if they have a legally non-conforming property.
Right. And so, so a number of these homes that would be impacted or be in non-conforming, you know, going into the future, you know, these would be aging homes, you know, so if a, if a landowner wants to do something, they'd have to go through that extra mitigation to improve their, their home. Is that, is that right?
For, for most additions, there's repair and maintenance allowed, so you could kind of keep on. But if you wanted to add much, it, you don't get very far before you, you really have to start improving the site to bring it closer to standards.
Yeah, it's, this is a really difficult thing. I, I mean, just with my own experience, I used to live in a home on Finn Hill that was near a wetland. And we were last going through this Critical Areas Update back in 2015 or 2016, I think it was, and that's when I decided to move because my home would have been one of these homes, and I would not have been able to put in a deck, or if I did, it would be very expensive, and it just wasn't worthwhile. And it's, so I, I just find that these things are really, really tough and challenging in an urban environment like this because it's only just, just shouldering the costs on, on the existing landowners. I don't have an answer, but I feel for people, and it's, I'd love to see an alternative. Thank you.
Councilwoman Sweet.
I mean, reading this and listening to it, and I, I think both Councilmember Black and Councilmember Pascal's comments are pretty right on. But I think, I feel like the Planning Commission was in the right, going, moving in the right direction when they leaned toward the RMZ. Because I think the RMZ ends up with the least encumbrance on a property, even though it's broader. There's less, I just think it's better. How's that?
Yeah, that's good. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you, Anna. Because this is very complicated, and we all, it is state-mandated that we do this. It's not optional, and I think this is the best solution moving forward. And the comment you made, which is, makes change faster, improving environmental conditions is really important. I mean, we're blessed in Kirkland that we do have the wetlands and the streams and the watersheds that we are caretakers for. So, I think this is a good solution, and I appreciate your work on it.
Thank you.
You're done. Thank you all. All right, we have time to move on to our next item, which is the Transportation Safety Action Plan and Speed Limit Setting Policy. City manager.
All right, so do we just have Jennifer for us? Okay.
Yes.
I would have more folks here too. But, okay, so this, checking back in on the Safety Action Plan and Speed Limit Setting Policy, we have some suggested updates for the council. We're looking for final feedback, and then we'd be bringing this back for final adoption at the December council meeting. So, this is sort of our last check-in. We think we've been responsive to the feedback of the council. So, our transportation engineering supervisor, Jennifer Palmer, is going to make the presentation, and we welcome council feedback.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Deputy Mayor and members of council. I'm Jennifer Palmer, the Transportation Engineering Supervisor here at the city. Tonight, as Mr. City Manager said, we're here to present the final draft of the Kirkland Transportation Safety Action Plan, which includes a revised speed limit setting policy. Staff will incorporate any changes to the draft case app and resolution if needed, and then come back for adoption at the December meeting. Just as a reminder, we do need to get the plan adopted in 2025 to comply with grant funding requirements. This plan advances Kirkland's vision for a safe, connected, and multimodal transportation system. It aligns with our Vision Zero goal of zero transportation-related deaths and serious injuries by 2035, and we get there by using the Safe System Approach, which is a multi-layered approach focusing on transportation, design, and management of our systems to reduce the risk of injury or harm from human error while driving. We've presented the Transportation Safety Action Plan and Speed Limit Policy topics either separately or together to Transportation Commission a total of six times in the last two years. In the September meeting of this year, Transportation Commission unanimously voted to recommend the Transportation Safety Action Plan for adoption, for council adoption. During the development of the plan, we convened an interdepartmental task force, including staff representing transportation, police, fire, planning, city attorney's office, and city manager's office. During these meetings, we presented information, answered questions, and heard feedback, and that feedback was incorporated into the plan. So, this plan does focus on reducing and eliminating fatal and serious injury crashes, affecting all roadway users, using detailed crash data analysis to characterize roadway safety problems, and then identify. safety problems, and then identifying countermeasures and strategies that address the most significant safety risks. The plan elements include community engagement, that detailed crash data analysis that I mentioned, a near miss or close call study and analysis, safety countermeasures for critical road segments and intersections, a policy review, the speed limit setting policy that we've been talking about lately, and then a summary of recommendations. As a part of the community outreach for the plan, we did both online and in-person events this year, include, the, the outreach included education on safety, transportation safety elements in general, countermeasures, and the content of the plan, the online web map that was launched by our consultant gathered over a thousand comments from our community, and then through these in-person conversations and the online contributions, we heard that there are concerns around pedestrian safety, driver behavior, and heard an interest in more engineering countermeasures, including automated enforcement. Our consultant performed extensive crash data analysis on both a ten-year and a five-year period, this graph illustrates an overall decrease in the number of crashes over the ten-year period, this aligns with our expectations due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which resulted in less traffic overall, and therefore fewer crashes, and while we've seen a total decrease in the number of crashes, we've seen a different trend in the fatal and serious injury crashes, so this graph illustrates the fatal and serious injury crashes, the fatal numbers are relatively standard, or relatively stable, rather, over the years, however, the serious injury crashes have increased even during the COVID pandemic, when there were fewer drivers on the road, so while this is consistent with national trends, Kirkland doesn't stand out in that way, this is something that we do need to focus on and address, which is part of what the plan does. Taking a look at our vulnerable road users, this chart shows that the trends in total numbers of crashes involving vulnerable road users, namely people walking, rolling, and bicycling, one thing to note is that while Peds and bikes were involved in only six percent of all reported crashes, they represent forty-six percent involved in fatal or serious injury crashes, and again, this is consistent with national trends, but it is something we do need to focus on and address. This chart depicts the top contributing circumstances in fatal and serious injury crashes in the five-year period of 2019 to 2023, the top five contributing circumstances listed are did not grant right-of-way to a non-motorist user, none or unknown, improper turn or merge, exceeding reasonable safe speed, and DUI, and then here we see that fifty-four percent of our FSI crashes occurred at intersections, thirty-one percent involve pedestrians, and twenty-five percent involve driver distraction, and then it, I should note as well that multiple contributing circumstances can happen to the multiple parties involved in the crash, and, yes, and then here are, just closing out the crash data portion of the presentation, this is just a visualization of where most of the crashes are occurring, the map on the left depicts the total crashes in the five-year period from 2019 to 2023, and then on the right are the fatal and serious injury crashes, this aligns with our expectations as well, because most of the crashes are happening where we expect the most exposure to traffic, like our arterial road network, so we've done all this analysis, and now what do we do with it? So our, our consultant, we've, along with our consultant, we've identified these ten corridors, our consultant provided one-page summaries for each of them, which is shown on the left here, these one-pagers include the leading crash types, contributing circumstances, and a suite of safety countermeasures to address those crash types and circumstances, and the safety countermeasures are, is what staff will focus on implementing in the coming years, and then similarly, for the intersections, our critical intersections, our consultant provided these one-pages as well, they looked not only at the crash data, but also at the near miss data to identify safety countermeasures that staff can implement moving forward. Safety countermeasures come in all different shapes and sizes, these are what's shown in our countermeasures toolbox, so things like access management, traffic signal improvements, speed management strategies, signings and markings, along with other implementations as well, and then this is a summary of the plan recommendations, so one is to scope specific projects from those one-pagers, the intersection and corridor analyses, consider expanded use of automated enforcement, continue to update, review and update every year the public works standard plans and policies to make sure that they are aligning with the transportation safety best practices of the day, consider more traffic safety education programs, and then pursuing those speed management implementation strategies. For the speed limit setting policy, in response to council feedback, the policy principles were revised to include a default local speed limit of twenty miles an hour on local streets as a policy principle, and a stated preferred maximum of thirty miles per hour on arterial and collector streets, and then just to mention also, per state law, local agencies don't have authority to change speed limits on arterial streets without an engineering investigation, so speed limits on arterial streets will be evaluated with an engineering investigation on a corridor-by-corridor basis, based on the methodology set forth in the policy. And then for the actual speed limit changes, staff will return in early 2026 with an ordinance to revise the KMC to lower that default speed limit on local streets, and then we'll also discuss implement, implementation strategies, including the sign changes themselves, are they spaced correctly, should it be changed, public outreach and education, review of impacted code language, public work policies and proof of plans, and then putting together a prioritization framework and phasing plan to phase in the changes. So for next steps, we can make any final changes to the plan document and speed limit setting policy, and then return for adoption at the December nine council meeting, and with that, I'd welcome discussion, questions, and feedback.
Thank you, Jennifer, council? Councilmember Black?
I don't know why, thank you, Madam Mayor, I don't know, can't stand the silence, so, I actually, I really don't have a lot, Jennifer, I just actually want to really thank you, and the whole team that worked with you, to incorporate the council's feedback on reducing the speed limits by default on local streets, and coming up with, I think, which is a nice compromise around having a preferred limit on arterials. What I, and that's really it, that's the main thing, I just want to thank you for that work, and of course, the, also the larger body of work that went into the, the plan. Now, when, I do have one question, though, when it comes to, now that we've sort of by rule, or as a matter of policy, the council has sort of established by rule, assuming we adopt this, default speed limit on local streets of twenty, a preferred speed limit of thirty on arterials, now going forward, I assume the, the cases in which this, the council would be asked to take a legislative action in connection with a specific corridor is going to be not if the staff is, is implementing the rule pursuant to an implementation plan that we've all nodded is a good approach, it's only going to be if the staff is recommending an exception to the rule, is that fair to say? That's when the council would be asked again, some future council would be asked again to weigh in, we've established a, as a policy, we've established a rule, it's the exception to the rule that would require council, no, city attorney's shaking her head.
On the thirty mile an hour one, you mean, that, setting that as the policy standard?
Well, it seems like it could, it could occur in either case.
Well, the, the statute allows specifically for a blanket reduction down to twenty miles an hour, without the need for the study and, and legislative action, the statute as currently written would not, would not contemplate the same thing for a blanket expectation of thirty miles an hour, we'd still, would need to bring those to you for legislative approval, unless you'd like to seek.
Okay, so.
Changes to the state law language.
Right, so when it comes to an arterial, what you're saying is, when it comes to an arterial, we've established as a policy matter a preference, but because of the, because of the requirements of state law, if staff does an engineering study, shows thirty makes sense, we're still going to have to prove that on a corridor-by-corridor basis.
Yes, that's our evaluation.
Can I ask a really dumb question that I keep, I keep asking, but I'd love to hear the, is there no de minimis standard for the length of a corridor that, that a local council has to weigh in on, I just, I keep wondering how it could be that if a transportation study is done, and it shows that we should extend this thirty mile an hour limit fifty feet, that, that has to be voted on, but I'm, I think what you're telling me is, I'm sorry, unless you change state law, that's exactly how it works.
That is what I'm telling you, yes.
Okay, all right, well then.
And even if it would be, you know, worth a risk to see if there was a de minimis standard if we pushed it, the risk is that we'd have citations thrown out, that's where the challenge would end up coming from.
All right, okay, well, I'll just circle back then and say, and thank you for answering my questions, and then thank you for all the work, I appreciate it.
Councilwoman Falcon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Jennifer and team, thank you so much for this body of work, I know a lot of the discussions so far is focusing on the speed limits, but again, thank you for the, the entire body of work that we have here, Councilmember Black stole my question, but I do have an additional question, or really just a comment, and then I want to acknowledge that I particularly appreciate that we're not just talking about speed limit setting in silo, right, that we acknowledge and understand and are going to take action on education and engineering as well, I know we've talked about this before, but since we're kind of wrapping this up a little bit, just want to emphasize that, that that's something that we're gonna really focus on, and that in particular around the, as a follow-up to Councilmember Black's question, when there are circumstances in which, on a particular corridor, a study has dictated that we, or indicated that we should temporarily keep a speed limit at thirty-five miles an hour rather than thirty miles an hour, that our acknowledgement would be that that would be temporary, and that we would pursue engineering changes to that road, so that we can change folks' behavior and the environment, so that folks would likely then drive slower, and then we would then, in, in the future, staff would propose reducing down to thirty miles per hour, that that would be our intent there, so I just want to make that clear to folks, I know we've discussed this before, but that that would be the intent, and that really we do want the default of thirty miles an hour on our arterials and collectors citywide, in addition to the twenty miles per hour on our neighborhood local streets, and again, that we will continue to pursue education and engineering, because we acknowledge that speed limit alone is not going to always change behavior and keep folks safe, and really what we're focusing on is changing behavior, and we acknowledge, as we've heard from our chiefs in our, in our first response departments and, and other folks, that, you know, it is not, it is not always speed, right, that there's distracted driving and, and other conditions that, that lead to some of these incidents, so we will continue to work on those things as well, so, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Pascal.
Thank you, thanks, Jennifer, it was nice to see kind of the full context of the body of work this time, I know we ran short last time and didn't get to, get to everything with the Safety Action Plan, so, and it was nice to see the full report, all three hundred plus pages, but I think the important part of that is that it kind of provides a context to some of these kind of major outcomes or recommendations, and having the data to support that is, is helpful, you know, I, I'm supportive of where this is going, I think you kind of took our feedback to heart and tried to simplify the process around speed limit setting, which I, I value, the other thing that I appreciated was that, and I, I think I said this last time, and I probably didn't say it very good, very well, but how, how we integrate this into our current practices, rather than kind of making, you know, making it another project in itself, right, that we take the outcomes and we figure out how to feed it into our, our current practices, and then we, we, we take action over time rather than in one fell swoop, so that's what I, I'm reading, is that right, is that my understanding, how you will likely go about it once it's adopted?
Yeah, so for the safety countermeasures, for example, that are shown in the plan, I think we would be very opportunistic, right, we have a lot of capital projects going on right now, and we would try to implement those safety strategies into, if they're new and weren't a part of the plan process already, we would implement those into those new projects that are going on, same thing with like development, frontage improvements and things, we could implement those, and then we do have a relatively modest opportunity fund for Vision Zero as well, which we do use to respond to things that are happening in the community, and so we could use some of that to knock out a few safety countermeasures per year, but I agree, we would work this into kind of the everyday body of work that we do on staff.
And then will there be opportunities for this to be considered, you know, some of these projects could be considered, or countermeasures could be considered as part of like the Neighborhood Safety Program, as ideas that the neighborhoods could consider as maybe choosing, I'm just thinking of ways, all the different ways to kind of push some of the countermeasures forward, you know, all the different programs we have already, so, yeah, I just encourage you guys to think about, about that, but looking forward to seeing this come back as part of the next CIP update, like what kind of projects we can actually start to bite off, that, get at some of the things that we continually hear from people, you know, the continual speeding of vehicles along certain corridors and, and stuff like that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tim Chisen.
Thank you, I, I appreciate all the work you've done on this, I have very few comments, the only comment I have is that there's a lot of references in this briefing to the sign, signage changes, but I haven't seen any reference to increased signing, and I don't know if that's part of your plan, but I often think it's, you know, fair to provide increased signing, especially if our speed limits are significantly different from surrounding municipalities or what people would expect, and I, I think we should look into increasing signage if we want people to follow speed limits that are outside of, I think, just what they would be expecting in a neighborhood, I don't think people would be expecting twenty in a, in a neighborhood, and if we're gonna do that, we have to make, make sure people are aware of the law, or they can't follow it, thank you.
Thank you, all right, Jennifer, well done, and, you know, you look, you scroll through the number of comments you got from the community, it's, it's amazing, you did a really good job of public engagement, and while you're passing on our thank yous, I don't think anybody mentioned the Transportation Commission, who also invested a lot of time in this, so please share our gratitude with them, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to take a quick break, and we will be back at nine twenty. Thank you. All right, we are back from a short break, and we are now moving item, to item 9C, next on our agenda, which will be the briefing on the zoning code amendments for the Wanita Business District, North Wanita Center. City Manager.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, Members of Council, welcome back. So, so I got to say a few remarks before we get to this, but to run you through this topic, we have our Director of Planning and Building, Anna Weinstein, our Deputy Director, Allison Zeig, and our Senior Planner, Leandra. They're going to give some of the background to the zoning code amendments, but I wanted to, since, you know, you saw in the packet, calling us the City Manager-initiated concept. So what we're looking for tonight is whether or not this is a concept you want us to build zoning language around, or if you want us to not do that, and then just come back with the discussions that you've had previously for the Planning Commission and start to amend those. Very quickly, because there was a lot in the memo, my intent in putting those together was really based on my feedback that I received from council members sort of before and after the series of presentations, and trying to talk through with the staff, the planning staff, about how could we reconcile all the things that we heard? And a couple just very high-level themes that this was attempted to. One was a sense of how do these two neighborhood centers sort of compare to other neighborhood centers, and how do we stay relatively consistent across neighborhood centers? That was one. Another one was definitely a very strong desire by the council to see these sites develop and not languish for decades, and that was a second, right? A third was, we're really intrigued by the Planning Commission recommendations, and we like generally where they're going, but creating some certainty in the positive outcomes we hope to achieve, how can that be done? And in some cases, we felt like maybe zoning itself couldn't get you there. So the last thing I'll say before I turn it over is that the goal of this proposal, if you like, is not to start over and have a year-long process, I totally get that, and it would be to start fairly quickly after adoption with what has already happened. So what the Planning Commission put forward, what you all have already seen, and that would be the concept between a development agreement or a similar mechanism. So just wanted to say all those things beforehand, and then again, we're looking at the very end as to whether this is a concept you like, or whether you'd like us to bring back to the future, meanings, a return to more of the Planning Commission kind of recommendations. So with that, yeah.
I want to see if council has any questions on what you just said. So, because I do.
Okay.
If no one else does.
Please.
So you said it wouldn't be to restart the process, and in your mind, what would be the timeline for the process? And in your mind, does it have to go back to the Planning Commission, or would it be something that would live in?
No, the intent would be not to go back to the Planning Commission. It would be, once the council's adopted the code, the development agreement type work, the council would have to hold the public hearing and things, but it would be basically done at the council.
Okay. And timeframe?
So timeframe, obviously, until you adopt the code, we can't start, but as soon as that happened, you know, so I'm thinking, you know, the first quarter of next year would be the goal.
Thank you.
Bring back some.
All right. You're welcome. Okay, thank you.
All right, so that, I'm not sure who was going to kick it off, so, okay, so, so Leandra?
Yes, thank you.
Please, go ahead, thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Council. I'm here tonight to continue the conversation on the Wanita zoning code amendments. I have about 12 slides of information and a 13th discussion slide, and I'll try to get to that, that portion pretty, pretty swiftly. The City Manager did a good job laying out why we're here and what we're talking about, so I might breeze through some of this unless directed otherwise. Oh, there we go. Tonight's agenda, just to review it, includes a quick recap of the work to date, including the Planning Commission recommendation, just as a review. We'll present that City Manager-initiated option of a base neighborhood zoning model that represents how we typically regulate those areas in the city. After walking through that, we'll be asking council for some direction on whether or not any of that base zoning model is appropriate for the Wanita C A R sites. And then we'll also discuss a little bit more on that timeline piece of what staff envisions for next steps, and then we'll turn it over to you all for input. This is not new information, but just in case there's someone joining us in the conversation a little later, it's been a couple months since we recapped the Planning Commission recommendation with you, so the JBD 4 and B C 1 zone draft code amendments are summarized on screen. These are the, the key development standards of highest relevance to the council discussions previously. They're similar, but both recommendations also have some variation. The similarities include a 75-foot height allowance, administrative design review as the Planning Commission's recommended review process, no requirements for high-performing building standards, some flexible affordability requirements through those inclusionary zoning standards, and then ground floor retail requirements that orient most activity near the right-of-way. There's, the main distinctions that we've reviewed with you at prior meetings include the height transitions that the Planning Commission recommended at the Goodwill site to kind of mitigate height impacts near low-density zones, as well as opening up allowances for townhomes on a portion of the Goodwill site. As I mentioned, of course, this isn't new to the council, and I won't review all the points on screen, but we've met with you three times prior to tonight to relay that Planning Commission direction and gather input from you. In May, we did a sort of temp check to make sure that the Planning Commission was on the right track before the public hearing. In July, we returned to deliver that Planning Commission recommendation and heard some hesitant support for code changes, but also heard that there are definitely uncertainties on the implications of those changes, how they're impacted by other plans such as our CIP and our comp plan, as well as their intersection with state legislation and citywide trends. And so most recently in September, we brought more information to you on those intersecting pieces and heard support for aspects of the Planning Commission recommendation, but there was still that uncertainty expressed that these allowance, though, these allowances though flexible, how well could they guarantee certain outcomes and objectives that are important to the council? So as our City Manager mentioned, in response to this, the City Manager-initiated option, we're calling the base neighborhood zoning, is representative of what our current neighborhood centers allow, with the idea being that if the base zoning is allowed by right, property owners could benefit from additional capacity, but also seek additional capacity and flexibility that was originally recommended by the Planning Commission through some sort of mechanism such as a development agreement or incentive-based zoning through later discussions with the city. We're not looking on, we're not looking to you to decide that mechanism tonight, just looking for guidance on the process that would lead to those eventual conversations. It should be noted also that the base zoning only reviews those key standards that we've been talking about over the last couple months. There are other aspects of the Planning Commission recommendations such as setbacks and lock coverage, parking requirements, required open space. Those are generally in alignment with our current neighborhood centers, or they respond to state legislation, and we have reviewed those with you as well at prior meetings. But since we haven't heard any specific council reservation to those more straightforward standards, our staff assumption is that we would bring forward the more straightforward development standards as recommended by Planning Commission unless directed otherwise. Really quick, this is just a reflection of Attachment 1 in the packet. This indicates where our neighborhood centers are, and I have that in the deck in case we want to refer back to it. There are similarities and variations with these areas, but we've worked to kind of standardize those as, as described in your packet. So the key elements of a base zoning would be a maximum height limit of about, of 60 feet. There's a sizable range between the neighborhood centers. They range from 26 feet to 78 allowed feet, or feet of allowed height. But there's also a common theme of incentive-based increases if the But there's also a common theme of incentive-based increases if the development can yield certain community benefits or outcomes that we've deemed as a priority. So the staff recommendation for a base neighborhood center zoning would be to allow 60 feet and leave an avenue open for achieving additional height up to 75 feet through those established zoning incentives or through a development agreement. Ground-floor commercial similarly, it varies across the neighborhood centers, but there are commonalities. They all promote active uses on the street level, and they usually require these uses to be accessible and visible from the street. There are also required dimensions of these areas, and there are some small allowances for accessory uses that support the residential units above, like lobbies. Base neighborhood center zoning would also reflect these required uses and regulate the dimensions of at least 13 feet in height on the ground floor and 20-foot depths for those commercial spaces. Regarding upper-story setbacks, or, excuse me, stepbacks, this is a common requirement for massing within our neighborhood centers where our design guidelines do apply, and our design review board has historically played a role in finalizing these elements of the building's design. Some areas require more stepbacks and more variation. It's often averaged with a set minimum as well, a minimum footage of stepback, but there are trade-offs to implementing these, as discussed in your packet, but staff has landed on a base zoning requirement of a 10-foot average stepback above the third floor for any facades that face a public right-of-way. Five of seven neighborhood centers prohibit ground-floor residential uses, aside from two which allow them in certain scenarios where they do not front the right-of-way or they're interrupted by a retail use that does front the street. Simply, a neighborhood center base zoning would probably carry this prohibition through, so we're recommending a base zoning that does prohibit townhomes and standalone residential uses on the ground floor. There are also some standards that aren't as contextually specific and are sort of a given in our neighborhood centers, and those are listed on screen. The high-performing building standards have been incorporated into some of our more recent rezoning projects that grant additional capacity. So the station area and our bridle trails rezone have implemented requirements for green buildings or high-performing buildings, so that's something we would carry forward, as well as our standard affordability requirements that apply to all commercial, high-density, medium-density, and office zones. That's the standard 10% set aside of units at 50% AMI or area median income or less for rent or occupied dwelling units. And finally, the neighborhood centers are usually designated as design districts, allowing us to use those and apply the design guidelines for pedestrian-oriented business districts that we employ through the design board review process. Similar to what you've heard tonight, staff has received comments which voice support for both approaches. Those in favor of the base zoning relay sentiments that the 60-foot height allowance is suitable for the areas, some citing that additional heights should not be available with incentives or by providing additional public benefits. And those who support the Planning Commission recommendation question the base zoning's viability and highlight the Planning Commission-recommended zoning as a reflection of years of collaboration between the public, the Planning Commission, and the council. So with that, we are looking for council direction tonight on how to best proceed. The packet presented you with two options. We've added a third in case you wanted to amend, or if you wanted to blend either model, but I think it might be best if we stick to option 1 and 2 and then follow with amendments as necessary, so ignore option 3. One more slide. Staff is recommending a follow-up on this at your next council meeting on November 18th to really dig into what those development standards are, what preferences you have, including the less discussed standards, so things like lot coverage and parking. And then we would review some project details with you ahead of adoption on December 9th. In conclusion, we're just looking to better understand council's preferred options, option for future study, and hoping to hear of any additional analysis that could make your job easier on December 9th.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tumchee Zenzin?
Can you just go back one slide? Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Just, my head's on a swivel up here. Councilmember Sweet.
Well, of course, I love option 3. But since it's no longer on the table, first I wanna, I wanna thank the City Manager and the team for coming up with this base neighborhood center zoning. I think it takes me back to the work that we tried to do with BN zones however many years ago, to try and get to some level of standard and an expectation across the board. So I support that from that perspective. I admit that this process feels like it's gone on for a long, long time, and I've read the letters, and I get the frustration and the fear that is being described by the developers. I feel like when we did the station area plan and put in form-based code and put in all of these requirements, we were ready to move forward, and I feel like some of those requirements got in the way of the ability to get a catalyst project, to get something started. So I'm stuck in the middle of an expect, I lean towards loving the base neighborhood zoning concept with a development plan, and if a development plan could be done in three months, I'd be fine with it. But I am sensitive to the concerns about, about having been involved in development plans in the past, I'm concerned about the time commitment that that would take. So I'm stuck between option 1 and option 2, which is why we call it option 3.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, this is a tough one, right? Because we want to get this right, and we also understand that there's time sensitivity to this, given that we've, you know, as we've heard tonight, taken already a few years with this. We've had extensive community input. We've had countless meetings with the Planning Commission and with City Council about this. We've had countless meetings with neighborhood associations and various stakeholders related to this, and all of that body of work led us to option 2, right? And none of these options are gonna be perfect, as Councilmember Sweet expressed, because it's tough, because we want to do things right. And, you know, so I really do appreciate the intent with option 1, right? Because I, as I've expressed before, have concerns about, you know, whether the Goodwill site will end up being half-townhomes and nothing will happen on the other half. I know that many of us share that concern, and so I appreciate the intent of wanting to address that somehow, and wanting to help make sure that the community is, that there's community benefit here, really achieving what's best for everybody all around and what the community needs. Like Councilmember Sweet, my concern with the proposal is the added timeline. It feels like, a little bit like we're kicking the can down the road a little bit. It also doesn't help with our, you know, reputation of how easy it is to do business with our city, too, so I'm concerned about that, about like continuously, you know, kicking the can down the road and just adding more red tape and more layers to this. And so, you know, without assurances that it would take only two or three months for this to be finalized, to go through the development agreement process, I have that concern. And I don't want it to turn into, like Councilmember Sweet said, like, that it, that nothing ever materializes out of that because we, because we just keep extending the timeline. You know, we've heard tonight willingness from the CAR applicants to roll up their sleeves and finalize the zoning code with us and hash out some of these existing concerns that the community and Planning Commission and City Council and, you know, that we have about where we're at. And so I want us to attempt that. I want us to, you know, before we proceed with doing this, you know, vastly different option, I want us to roll up our sleeves and see if it really can be a week that we can hash this out and get to a place where it really does work for everybody, that we have the assurances that we're gonna really be able to achieve all of our combined shared goals here. You know, we've heard from some community members concerns over infrastructure, making sure we keep up with infrastructure needed to support any development at these sites, including a lot of feedback on traffic at these two intersections. You know, we have solid policy in place, both as a city and as a state, on keeping up with infrastructure, and we do that well as a city, and it will, of course, comply with state law on concurrency. And as I've said, I think I just bring this up every time we talk about these two sites, that we need to explore roundabouts at both of these intersections. I know that isn't directly what you're asking, but I just want to mention that again, because I want to make sure that that's really something that we keep our eye on, that that's our policy. Whenever there's any major intersection improvements, that we, that's our default, is exploring a roundabout to both improve traffic flow, the concerns from the community around traffic flow efficiency at these intersections, and also increase safety as we may have additional pedestrians and cyclists in this area. So additionally, as you proceed, I want us to be as transparent as possible about our infrastructure improvements. Again, I know we already do this well, but I think it's really important to be transparent and educate the community on what we do around infrastructure improvements when there are projects like this. So all that said, similarly to Councilmember Sweet, I am torn a little bit on this, but if we have to give some direction tonight, I support moving forward with a Planning Commission-recommended zoning for all the reasons that I articulated. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Leandra and team, and thank you for the City Manager for initiating a process and thinking through some options on this. We like options, but in the end, with this, I support moving forward with an amended version of the Planning Commission zoning. I'm very concerned about adding a proposal to the end of the process, and also the precedent of having a development agreement at this scale of development where we haven't done that before. We have talked about during the sessions, Leandra, that you mentioned on a number of things that I think will be topics for amendments. Affordable housing flexibility was one. Strengthening the ground-floor retail requirements was one. I had mentioned making some of the things that were incentives like flexibility with the high-performing building standards, making them pioneer provisions to tie them into saying, if the development community is saying we have an opportunity for near-term development, I want to make sure that anything we're doing to incent is tied to actually having that near-term development. I think there's gonna be a robust discussion about amendments if we choose this, but I think we can get to a point, given all the work that's done over a number of years with the Planning Commission, on something that's acceptable. We've already scaled back from the original, given councils openness to townhomes. And we are, I think, pretty united on wanting to have a connection between Waneta Bay Park and Waneta Beach Park. The discussion is what's the best mechanism to do so. And so I think it is about getting those details done and would rather go with option 2 to figure out those details and necessary amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for the additional options and additional discussion about this, appreciate that. You know, I've raised a number of issues throughout this process. I feel like the option 1 is kind of getting closer to some of the issues I've raised. I do, I do want to acknowledge the concerns that were raised by the property owners. It has been a long process, and definitely, you know, I think the process overall, there's things that I'd want to talk through next time, just knowing what I know now. But I would say that legislative processes around land use and zoning are never straightforward and easy, as much as we would always like them to be. There's kind of three things that are, that, why I'd be leaning towards an option 1. One is, I felt this process, one of the things that concerns with this process is that there's some major policy changes that were being recommended by the Planning Commission that we haven't really seen before and we hadn't really addressed as a council. One, that was some pretty significant height in our commercial centers where we don't have that height elsewhere, and I think that summary was really helpful, that map that you had in the packet that showed that. Two, some very specific inclusionary requirements that were different than maybe some of the other areas, and changes in just stepbacks and other things that we normally have in design guidelines in our commercial districts. So, I mean, those are all kind of really, you know, once you, once you start going down that path, then all the other areas, commercial areas, and the property owners in the city are gonna want those same things, right? So you're never going to be able to kind of come back from that, and so that's why it's like a really major policy issue, actually impacts much more than just these properties. It impacts things citywide, it will, down the road. Two is that, I've been raising this for a while, really wanting to make sure that anything that's done, it really promotes quality retail and commercial space. And I think, you know, I don't know that we have that right, and I don't know that we ever will, but I want to continue trying. And, and then the third, again, is the height, 85 feet. I mean, yeah, 85 feet, seven stories, it's easy to say, but when you actually see that out there, it's significant. It's a significant scale, and I think we would see these properties at that scale for decades, and with nothing else around. And I just, just have some concerns around that. I think the City Manager's proposal, option 1, tries to attempt to address that. It gives that 60-foot height as a base, so it's not like property owners have to go through a development agreement. They can build up to five stories under that proposal, is my understanding, once the zoning is enacted. So it's, it's, it's not like you have to go through a development proposal, only if you want to do something of significant scale, perhaps. I also believe it starts to address some of the concerns raised by the public. But I, but, you know, this just came out, I'm still digesting it as well, and I, so I know others are, and I know the property owners need to. So hopefully, we can give them time to make sure we get all the input that we need. So that's just where I'm at, leaning towards option 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Was it me already?
Yep.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I appreciate this conversation, I appreciate, oh, man, I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into it with property owners. This is a really hard one, and it's also a really interesting one, right? Because, one, it starts out with citizen amendment requests, which is a request by property owners for, to be granted additional development rights. It's also something we were doing in the process of a comp plan, where we were really looking at where it makes sense to have more services and housing, and these were identified as two areas with a great deal of consensus among the public, too, that these were neighborhood centers where it did make sense. At the same time, and so I do want to acknowledge the frustration of everyone involved, probably planning commissioners who may be listening to this, property owners. For all I know, the planning staff is sitting there frustrated by all this, but, so I get it, but some of the things Councilmember Pascal said, I think are, I agree, I agree with spot on. And I think, well, number one, I really want to make sure that we get this right, and I do want the neighborhood serving retail, I do want more units of housing where more people can work where they live and live where they work, where more people can get to their services, you know, rolling and walking. So I want that for the, these sites, and I also, it's consistent with the comp plans, consistent with the conversations we had around the comp plan, et cetera, et cetera. But one of the things I experienced as we were talking about this through so many conversations with the council, is I just feel like we're trying to do way too much with zoning decisions. We are trying to solve for feasibility in legislation. We are trying to solve for feasibility in legislation, and that is always going to be a challenge. We're always going to bump up against questions about feasibility, and I think one of the beauties of this proposal is it takes a significant step toward the vision of the comp plan for these neighborhood centers, while also letting the question of feasibility be the next question as part of a negotiated discussion as to what is feasible and what's not feasible, and what community benefits make sense and what don't. Instead of trying, and again, acknowledging all the hard work that has gone into all the different components of the proposal that would be option two, that is being forwarded by the Planning Commission, I just think we're trying to do too much with zoning. And, and I also share Councilmember Pascal's concern about, I think, about consistency and precedent setting, and I think we do need to think about that. I do want to be consistent with how we enact the comp plan in our neighborhood centers, and I do want to avoid a situation of a race to seek the same kind of concessions. And that may not be the exact right word, but I'm going to use it just for, just for these purposes, you know, asking for the same kind of alterations to our base zoning. So I really actually appreciate option one. I realize it feels like it's coming in late in the game, but what it's really doing is it's saying, let's take a significant step forward now, and then let's deal with the question of, the real question of feasibility, when we can have a real conversation with, with a, I would say, a, you know, a more meaningful proposal in front of us. So that's where I come out, and so I would like to see us move with option one.
Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. So I would note that this CAR process, at least for the Michael site, began in January of 2024, and I note that 11 meetings that they've participated in, six Planning Commission meetings, as well as, I think, five City Council meetings between January 25th, 2024, and September 2nd, 2025. The CAR process is a process where the applicant does not deserve a yes, and they don't deserve a no, but I think they deserve an answer within a period of time that leads to financial feasibility of the project. And to, you know, and they feel like, like they've participated in this process in good faith, and that they're close to the finish that we're changing the process. I'm sympathetic to those concerns because the financial feasibility of these projects is in question, and to Councilmember Falcone's point, our reputation as a city and how easy it is or difficult it is to do business here is in question. The, you know, and the, the, the Planning Commission, the amount of Planning Commission meetings they've been to seems to exceed what, what I would have envisioned in the CAR process, which might be three, but not six. And the amount of time that I would envision the CAR process to go, you know, would be one year and not two or three. I don't want this project to drag into 2026. I think there's, it's possible that we could see housing within this decade on these two sites if we move forward. I do support option two, and if somebody had asked me two years ago which one of these options I supported, I may have had a different answer, but two years into it, I think I have to, you know, honor the, the, the deal we made in the beginning of these CAR processes with the people who entered into it in good faith. And the amendment process is, can be a contentious process, and it has to be handled correctly. And I think we need a briefing schedule, perhaps from the City Manager, and we all need to stick to that briefing schedule, and that briefing schedule should include when amendments need to be proposed by, when amendments need to be published by, and we need to give the applicant and our community members ample opportunity to respond to those amendments in an orderly fashion, so that the meeting is cordial and we all feel that those amendments were handled in an orderly manner, where the applicant, community members, and council members got to feel heard before those amendments were voted on. So I do support option two, and I very much appreciate the City Manager and others offering these other options, but I feel like that we're too late in the process to, to deviate. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank my councilmembers for their very thoughtful comments. Everybody has made very good points, and this has been a long process, and it's late in the evening, and I appreciate, or appreciate the City Manager, because what you're trying to do is bring us together, resolve all of our conflicting opinions and issues, and create a standard process that we could probably use for other neighborhood centers, because it is hard as a developer that every, everywhere you develop in the city of Kirkland is different. You know, we can see the differences between our neighborhood centers, and it would be nice if there was more congruency between them. But in recognition, I, I am on option two also. In recognition of the work that's been invested so far, and when we looked at the Planning Commission recommendations last time, the two that struck out to me that I was uncomfortable with was the affordable housing recommendations. Why do it differently than what we've done forever? And in the memo, it did say that Arch supported our 10% at 50% AMI. And also, I was uncomfortable with, I'm okay with the townhouses, but I want to connect those two pieces together, the townhouses and the multifamily, that, that they're, they both happen, that we don't end up with just the townhouses and an empty lot to the side. So the things that made me uncomfortable with the Planning Commission recommendations, I think we can resolve and move forward on. So, City Manager, I was taking notes here on where we were, and I was afraid we were going to be split completely in the middle, but I'm also for option two, so hopefully that will make us able to move forward.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilmember Black and Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Okay, thank you. I have a, so now, so, you know, it looks like we're going to move forward with option two. I just wanted to make sure I understand now the process, because I think one of the challenges is we don't have consensus on, on the PC recommended, the Planning Commission recommendations. We're already just up here right now saying, well, yes, but not this one thing and not this other thing. So if we're, I think, bringing the proposal together forward at the November 18th meeting, City Manager or, I guess, Director, what's our plan? How are we going to get from here to November 18th with, with something we can actually vote on? I'm all for calling the question on all these things. I just, is that what we're going to do? We're going to walk through every single element and call the question on each one? I just want to make sure I understand.
So, don't quite know yet. You have two meetings to figure it out, possibly an extra meeting after that. My suggestion, and it's just a suggestion, would be then we bring back what the Planning Commission did, not for action on the 18th, but for a direction on amendments that would be developed, and then I think you'd need to do the votes on the 9th. So you have plenty of time to review each other's comments, review each other's concerns. Consistent thing I've heard, and I've heard again, that I think the staff would need to work with the developers on, is this sort of issue of how can you guarantee the outcome? And that just zoning alone doesn't seem to satisfy the majority of the council that that's going to do it. So I think figuring out that mechanism is going to also be something we have to do over the next couple of weeks. But, so my advice would be, we have a representation on the 18th of what the Planning Commission actually recommended, and then the kinds of amendments the council wants to see, discussed at that meeting, and then brought back to the meeting on the 9th, and then, you know, then a votaraba, I guess, is what I would say is going to happen on the 9th, right?
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. So I would say, nothing, it's late. Let's move on.
Councilmember Tim Chisen?
I, I, I support option two, but I'd like a briefing schedule for the City Manager, and I'd like to make a motion on that if it's needed, but I'd like to see a hard briefing schedule for amendments.
Can you be a little more descriptive about what you're talking about?
Sure. I'd like to have a date where councilmembers' amendments are due by. I'd like to have that be in advance of the packet, and I'd like to prohibit, to some extent, oral amendments at the meeting. And I don't know if that's possible, but it's a, I, I just want to give everybody with a briefing schedule amendments, so that we can vet each other's amendments, and that the community members and the developers have an opportunity to respond to those amendments as best we can. I, it's an aspirational goal. I know it's difficult, but in a courtroom, there's a briefing schedule, and in a, in council, sometimes maybe it's not possible, but, but I, I would like the amendments to come with enough notice that the developers are able to craft coherent responses, and the developers today felt that they had three business days to respond to different things that were happening at this meeting, and they felt like they didn't have a lot of notice on what was happening at this meeting, because they got notified three business days before. I don't want that to happen with the amendments.
Thank you. City Manager, thoughts?
You know, we've done something similar in the past. I don't think the council can constrain itself from doing amendments in a meeting, right? Unless you all choose at the beginning of that meeting to say that's your, that's the rule you're going to use. But I think, you know, we do have, between the 18th and the 9th, we have the extra week, right? So one of the things that we could propose at the 18th is to set a date, like the following week for any amendments being due, and then share it with other councilmembers. I need to work a little bit with the staff and the city attorney. Obviously, having you all have each other's amendments at the same time is important from a transparency standpoint, but it can get complicated pretty quickly in terms of like discussion and, and OPMA issues. So I just want to be able to set that up correctly, but I think we could, certainly there's enough time to do something like that, if that's the interest of the council.
Okay. Thank you. Any other thoughts? I see that we have two questions. Do you want to?
I think the first one's been addressed. If there's any additional information or analysis that we can provide ahead of time, just let us know.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we are going to move on to, are you just staying for Houghton Village Development Plan update, if you'll let me? Okay. Our last business item, City Manager.
Sorry, I was doing swift consultation on briefing. So, same top team, so we've got our Planning and Building Director and our Deputy Director of Planning and Building here. Want to check in on the Houghton Development, Houghton Village Development Plan update. Looking for a direction from the council on whether to proceed with finalizing the development plan itself for the site. So to remind you a little bit what that is and talk about next steps, I believe I'm turning this over to Allison Zeiger, Deputy Director of Planning and Building.
All right. Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers. So we don't have a lot of new information for you tonight, but we haven't talked to you about this one in a few months, so we're kind of bringing it back up to the top of your mental inbox tonight, reminding you of a couple of things, and then asking you for some direction, kind of the big next step direction. So I have eight slides for you, mostly review, and then we also have our Financial Planning Manager, Kevin Pellstring, with us tonight to present a couple of slides, and he's here for questions that I cannot answer. So you all know this, but just remind anyone or, or share the info with anyone that hasn't been familiar with this site. The city did purchase the Houghton Village property back in 2022, and at the time, council identified their vision for public purposes on the site. So you bought it to try to realize some public purposes, such as affordable housing, school space, nonprofit space, neighborhood shops, arts and cultural space, and/or city recreational space. So with that kind of direction and those aspirational goals, we've been working on this one for a couple of years. We've completed a lot of outreach with the community, a lot of really focused outreach with different community members and stakeholders, to try to make sure that we fit as many of the community's visions onto the site as we could. And we did that with the development framework. So more recent project background this year was really starting a process to try to see if there was anyone out there that might want to develop this property with us. So back in January, council, you gave us direction to issue a request for proposals seeking a development partner, and that was based on the development framework we developed the year prior. We did receive four proposals on the RFP, well, actually, three proposals. One was a letter explaining why they didn't propose, and then we had one proposer withdraw. We do still have two active potential development partners, and you received a presentation from them at one of your July meetings, so they came to the meeting and talked about their proposals for the site. More recently, we did kind of send both of the potential partners some additional, additional financial scenario and ask them, hey, what if we go this direction? Would it change any of the information you provided us? Do you want to present us with any new information? Neither of them submitted any additional information at this time, so their proposals are still what you heard back in July. So one of the next steps, and we talk about this in your packet, is we've continued to draft a development plan, and if you'll remember, we've talked about it a lot of times, a development plan is required by our comprehensive plan to unlock development capacity up to five stories on this site, and that development plan is required to be adopted by council through a public process. And so at this time, council is prepared with your direction to bring that development plan to a public hearing, and that would be the public process. The draft development plan is not in your packet, but we included a kind of an overview of what it would include in it, and so the development plan really builds on the development framework you've already seen with site plans for the site, potential height, massing, some of the programming that could fit on the site, and the development plan also adds some administrative sections that talk about how we actually use the plan, what are the strict standards, what are more guidelines? And as an example of that, one of the more kind of strict requirements in the development plan would be how much housing and commercial or community space do we want to fit on the site? And so through the design process with our architecture team to figure out what can fit on the site, we identified that 145 total residential units could fit on the site in the layout that you see on the screen, and so the development plan that we might bring to you for public hearing would identify that a future development proposal is consistent with the development plan if it provides within 10% of that 145 residential units. And so it gives some flex, because someone's buildings might be designed a little differently than these buildings, but it's still making sure that you get something very close to what you directed us to build in the development framework. The same would go for the commercial and retail or community space on the site. Through the plan you see on the screen, there's almost 26,000 square feet of space on the ground floor that's accessible to pedestrians or people rolling, that could be used for commercial, retail, or community, similar to what we talked about with the residential units. The development plan would identify, hey, we know this much square footage can fit on the site. A development proposal would need to provide something within 10% of that. Same thing with the public open space. That's been a really big topic of conversation with you, council, and also with community members. People really wanted a space to gather on the site, and so we've identified that as one of the key components of the requirements in the development plan. We have about 20,000 square feet of open space in the development framework, and so the development plan, same thing, we'd identify that space and give someone just a little bit of flexibility if they have a slightly different layout. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Kevin to talk about kind of the financial update.
Thanks, Allison. Just a quick reminder where, where we are in this on the financing side. So we did purchase, the city purchased the Houghton Village property in May 2022 with a three-year interfund loan for 1 point, or $14.2 million. The intent was to, to pay that back with. The intent was to, to pay that back within three years at a interest rate of 1.1%. So that timeline ended in May, and now we're looking for council direction to determine what next steps there should be for financing to pay that interphone, interfund loan back. There was a May 2025 appraisal at three stories for 16.5 million, which would be sufficient to pay that $15 million back, as well as a, an August 2025 appraisal at five stories, which was 18.25 million. So the three financing options that we have for you today, and interested in your feedback on, one is to explore the sale of the property with the development plan, so at that 18.25 million dollar appraisal, that'd be sufficient to repay the interfund loan, and there could be, depending obviously on a lot of market uncertainty, undetermined risk of the real estate market, a surplus that could be used for some of those 27, 28 priorities that we've been discussing. The second option is to explore the sale of property without a development plan, so the assumption is that would be that 16.5 million dollar appraisal, which would be sufficient to repay the interfund loan as well, and still have a smaller surplus after loan repayment. And again, there's some undetermined risk going out to the market, but that is, you know, the baseline number that we're working from. And finally, to retain the property, to explore future options. So this could include issuing bond anticipation notes, the BANs that we've talked about previously, I believe, in the spring with our bond council, or some other short-term financing or loans that could get us towards being able to issue long-term bonds, or whatever next steps may be to pay off the interfund loan in the, in the long term. Another option is, as described in the memo, is the Expanded Lack of Land Acquisition Program, ELAP, which is a state commission in combination with some funding, some crediting from, our line of credit from Microsoft, which allows for short-term loans for land acquisition for affordable housing projects. We're in discussions with them, have a little bit of information, it's a little bit unclear if that would be the best option for the city moving forward, but it is something that we're continuing to explore, and I'll pass it back to Ally.
Before we move on, I want to see, yeah, councilor Black?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, quick question for Kevin before you disappear. I do want to, I do want to understand if, if there is a surplus in either of the sale scenarios, would those funds be in a, would they be in general, are those general fund dollars?
Yes, that's my understanding.
So, many of the priorities, so when we talk about our 27, 28 priorities that we've been talking about, many of them would be, there is the potential to use the surplus for some of those?
Correct.
Including, and a question maybe for the city manager or you, including things like, just, we've talked about a lot of stuff recently, but things like the pool, is that a yes? So, okay, all right, I just want to make sure I understand that, thank you.
That's correct.
Deputy mayor?
A question for Allison, we've got the development plan that we have talked about that would be approved, or one of the options is that we could approve that development plan. If a new owner of this wanted to do something different, could they also propose a development plan or a modification for council consideration?
Exactly. So the development plan, when we bring it to you for public hearing, if that's what you direct us to do, it has some provisions for modifications to the plan, there's minor modifications, that would be staff reviewed, or major modifications that would come to council. I suppose someone could also, if they don't like the development plan that council might adopt at all, they could scrap it and apply for a new one, I believe.
Okay, and then within the plus or minus 10% that you mentioned, if there was a proposal to do that, that would be a staff, a, a planning permit approval process that council would not be involved in?
Right, the concept in the development plan is that we build in certain flexibilities that could be reviewed by staff, so it gives specific developments that flex, but if they want to go beyond that, they would have to come back to council to modify the development plan itself.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Creating a development plan does not impact the ability to sell the property if we so choose, is that correct?
Correct.
And would it potentially make the property more attractive?
The pathway to get to the five stories of development versus the three stories that is allowed now would already be laid out.
The managers nodding has had to my question, but.
Okay.
I don't, yes, you didn't, sorry.
Yeah, a client of sight, sorry, yes. Yes, it would.
Okay, 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 so it doesn't, it may potentially improve our opportunity, our options, and not constrict them, is that fair? Okay, thanks.
Anyone else have questions? Go ahead.
So, the development plan itself is in the packet, right? And so when we say approve a development plan, we would, approval is just a public hearing and we approve it, or am I missing something?
Just to clarify, the, this packet for tonight's meeting did not include the full development plan, it included the, a lot of the site planning, your November 18th, we are prepared to bring it to public hearing on November 18th, and the full development plan would be included in that packet, and includes those administrative pieces that I just kind of breezed through tonight, how to use the plan.
Okay, so, so, so we are, we are already developing the plan, right, it's just more about, do you approve the plan and, and potentially sell the property, right?
Right.
And so theoretically, couldn't, couldn't that plan be stopped before the approval, and then, you know, whoever buys the property later could just, could take that, could take that development plan up and modify it however they want, and then bring it back? Is that, is that?
I suppose so, it's all in the public records, I guess they could use it, yeah.
I'm just trying to understand the kind of, how, how things could, could potentially go in the future, and what the difference is. So, that, just us approving the plan basically increases the, the property value by a couple million.
I think the nuance, I would say, is that, again, similar to the conversation we had, is it's not clear what a future council would do, right, so if, if there hasn't been a plan adopted that gets you to five stories, you don't know that you would get that, but obviously a future council could also decide that as well. So, I think knowing there's at least a plan that goes to five stories creates the value, and then they could propose to modify it or not, or they could always sell, build less than five, right, if they wanted to just build three or one, they could also do that.
Thank you, I just, I want to make sure I was thinking about it right, so, that's helpful.
So, council, I think they need us to weigh in on which option we prefer. Councilmember Falcone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, well, thank you for this update, it was good to get a check-in and see where we are, so I appreciate that, it was good to be refreshed on, on where we were at. I agree with proceeding with the development plan, it seems like that's beneficial regardless of future decisions that we make on this site, so I'd like to proceed with the development plan, and continue with option three, but with the possibility of option one still remaining open. Well, that we still proceed with options to explore, you know, ways that it can be developed, we've already received two proposals for that, and then if we decide that neither one of them we want to pursue, that we can sell it at that point.
City manager?
No, I think, you know, in some ways it's, if you adopt a development plan, all options are on the table, right? You can adopt, sell, plan and sell, you can adopt the development plan and keep it, so I guess in some senses you don't have to decide that piece today, you could decide that on the eighteenth, or you could decide that on the ninth, you know?
If, if the two proposals suddenly came forward and said, we want to move forward.
Right, right.
Which, which they haven't given us any indication that they're interested in doing. Okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying I don't want us to decide now that we're going to sell.
Okay, thank you. Deputy mayor?
I'm ready to call the, the question on this, when Ally had done your first presentation, you said you had no new information, I'd hope between July and now that the two entities that had put together proposals would come up with some financing that didn't require the full $14 million cost of contribution, which we don't have a funding source for, and because of the challenges with this now, I don't see them changing in the short term, and I'm not willing to extend this indefinitely. So, I'm in support of option one, adopting a development plan, perhaps this would spur some action, but I'm not willing to leave things open, and would like to start the process of approving the development plan and indicate our intention to, to sell, sell the property. If a, one of the entities came back and said, hey, we've got some Amazon money or other things that made the $14 million whole, then we could do that, but I just, we, it's been almost six months since we've last heard from them, and there's been no progress, so I'm ready to move forward with this sale.
Councilmember Black, and then councilor Sweet?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So generally in line with what deputy mayor Arnold is saying, I don't think it's terribly different, actually, than what councilor Falcone is saying, actually. So proceed with the development plan, keeping the op, I mean, we, just, the, the fact of the matter is, it'll, we'll have options until we finally actually do specifically call a question on sale of the property. I do want to understand where, you know, we're using the concept of explore sale of the property, city manager, can you tell me a little bit about what our process is? We obviously don't have a probably a ton of experience with this, but.
We don't, so.
Explore sale of the property doesn't mean.
Start putting it up for sale, and.
We do have a commercial broker that we're.
We have, yeah.
But I mean, for example, that's, well, so, so that's an example, so we, first step might be just talking to a commercial broker.
Right.
What does the market look like right now? That's, that's exploration, without necessarily having the property listed, and is that something that we'd be comfortable working, doing in parallel with, assuming we had council consensus? Would that be something we could start doing, having conversations with a broker about what the market looks like? We know what they said, sorry, I'll stop, but we know what the assessed value is, but we don't really know what the market demand is.
We can, I, I guess, if that's what the council would like us to do, we can certainly explore that.
It doesn't lock us into selling, it, it gives us more information.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess I would put that to my colleagues to think about, whether that's something we could, kind of an interim step directing the staff. I think that's the direction I would go, is let's work on a development plan, and let's learn more if we can.
Councilmember Sweet?
I'm in agreement with moving forward with the development plan in terms, and praying that one of those two candidates steps up. I think having a development plan in place might help with that, and I'm still, I'm hopeful, I will pray for that to happen, but beyond that, then yes, I think we should explore the sale.
Thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Thank you. If, if we were to receive an offer on the property, would that come back to council? Or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I'm, I'm comfortable, and I appreciate deputy mayor Arnold's comments, and I'm comfortable with one.
Thank you. Councilmember Pascal?
Thank you, I think you all know that I would support the, exploring the sale of the property. My dilemma with options, option one, that I, I'm trying to reconcile in my mind, is the precedence of it, the city goes, buys a piece of land, changes the zoning or the, prepares a development plan, and then sells it for more money, it just, it, it feels a little, I don't know, I, I have, I have a hard time explaining that to people, it doesn't seem like that's something that we should be doing. Can we do it? Sure, of course we can, it's just, it's just the precedence of that that concerns me. So, that's where I'm at.
So your option two?
Two.
Thank you. All right, I am in option one, and adding the development plan is not really different than what the existing zoning is, it's just we've codified, we've codified the existing zoning, so we're not really changing things to our advantage, but I do think that it's time to sell the property, so let's move forward with option one.
Okay, thank you. Very helpful.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We're going to now move on to councilor's reports, and I will start with deputy mayor.
Thank you, mayor, no report.
Councilmember Pascal?
A report.
Councilmember Falcone?
I was going to say no report, but just want to mention one thing, that councilmember Sweet and I, a week or so ago, visited a, attended a drone show in the city of Bellevue to do some research as TDC chair and vice chair, and it was fun, and we've learned things from it, and we're going to continue to learn from it, and just wanted to highlight that.
Oh.
Is the clerk, clerk get a copy of this too?
I thought you were handing this out, so, okay, thank you. Councilmember Tim Chisen?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
Nothing to report.
Councilmember Sweet?
Nothing to report, I think four of us are going.
To the race summit next week, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you, I had to have something to report, so yesterday, was it yesterday, I had the opportunity to go to Friends of Youth Point Housing, Bridge Housing, and I think it wasn't on the council members' radar, and it was a wonderful event, in that they're opening up housing for 18 to 24-year-olds that are leaving inpatient behavioral treatment to provide them around services at a place, safe place to live, live until they get back on their feet. So if you get a chance, maybe reach out to Friends of Youth for a tour.
Is this that project on 68th that we visited?
No, no, that's Iris Place.
That's right.
Yeah. I want to acknowledge that we had the final ribbon cutting after five years of fulfilling proposition one, so thank you voters. I want to thank the community members on Goat Hill for not only taking the tour with us, but they baked us cookies, and they made thank you signs, which is always appreciated. I guess it was just, councilmember Black and I went to the AWC meeting, district meeting, it was a great turnout, and every city is feeling the stress of federal actions, that was the major topic of conversation. I recently talked to the Sound Cities Association executive director, again, the cities are all talking about, what are, what are you seeing regarding ICE activities, what are you doing to support immigration, what, how's your response to federal actions, so I suggested that that becomes a topic for pick at an upcoming meeting, so we can collaborate and work together. And finally, there's two SCA meetings coming up, one on December 4th, which is the annual meeting, and it's an evening party, and another one is on December 9th, which is a board meeting, and I need delegates, volunteers to attend those meetings to vote, so.
Just clarification, it's a caucus meeting, I believe.
Caucus meeting, thank you.
Oh, North Caucus.
To vote in, there's a lot of open spots, so to vote in new voters.
And there's a lot of open spots in North Caucus, so let's do the first one, is anyone interested in attending the December 4th annual meeting to be a voting delegate? That is a Wednesday night, I believe. It's at Pickering Bar, Barn?
Thursday, Madam Mayor.
It's Thursday?
If it's the fourth.
Okay. It is the fourth.
I can't find my phone.
All right.
Oh, deputy mayor?
I'd be interested.
Thank you.
Do you need just one, Madam Mayor?
I need just one for sure, so.
Good enough.
You all are welcome to attend, and then the December 9th caucus meeting, which is at 12:30, so it's midday.
In Snoqualmie?
No, it's virtual.
Ah, I can probably do it, but I don't know for sure.
All right, well, okay, so we have councilor Sweet, and councilor Falcone is a potential backup. Thank you, everyone. City manager?
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, so I have three items for you, two are related, so, and you have, first, this is related to the potential emergency response allocation for food, so one of them is a fiscal note, and that would authorize us to spend $100,000 on account of fund balance in response to the, what's currently going on with SNAP and the delays, and to be used with the funding services organizations. So, related to that, and we can take them in any order, we also have a proposed resolution for the council to declare an emergency, as we discussed in the study session, this would be to sort of maximize the flexibility, the city attorney has drafted a resolution. The way we're doing this is slightly different than we've done in the past, usually, the emergency occurs, the city manager proclaims it, and the council ratifies the action, but the city manager proclaims it, and the council ratifies the action, but since that's all happening on the same day, under our code, the council's also allowed to declare the emergency. So this resolution would be declare the emergency, and then direct me to take the actions necessary to deal with the emergency if it comes up. So the whereas section explains the reasons why, but I think the thing to point out is that, that as drafted, this would expire on December 31st of 2025, or until SNAP funding is reestablished, and obviously we'd keep checking back with the council if conditions don't change. So my recommendation would be to go ahead and consider a motion approving Resolution 5700 first, and then to consider a motion approving the fiscal note second. If I'd happen to answer any questions.
Okay. Why don't you give us two seconds to read the resolution?
Madam Mayor, may I ask the staff a question while?
Absolutely. Deputy Mayor?
While reading. As we're looking at authorizing our proclamation of emergency, we have a draft of the proclamation, which is, looks pretty boilerplate to other ones that we have done. I'm wondering if City Manager or City Attorney could speak to Section 3 on police powers and curfews, and whether that's integral to the proclamation, given what we're talking about? Is that something that could be removed?
Yes.
Yeah, it's certainly boilerplate, and we could remove it. We have sort of boilerplates ready in the event there's an emergency in our, in our emergency plan, so we start with that. So that's not necessary for this, if you'd like to remove it.
And just a note for council, Deputy City Clerk Ferguson, sharing your screen, so that the public can see what we're talking about right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Well, let me.
So any objection to deleting Section 3? So you're, you'll be approving this in the proclamation, is a draft, so I would just go ahead and take Section 3 out.
Agree.
So.
Councilor Tim?
You're removing the end date?
You're in the proclamation of the.
No, I apologize. The, the proclamation that's attached, which is what the city manager would issue, so the resolution itself, that the end date would remain, that, that Section 3 stays, it's the Section 3 of the proclamation that would be deleted.
Second document there.
Oh.
Does he not have a complete?
Councilmember Tim Chisen didn't, didn't actually get both copies, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at the end of the thing here, and I just get what the leftover documents.
Section 3 in there, you're not going to like it.
Apologies, council member.
No, I think Deputy Mayor should move the amended motion.
Sure, I'll. I'd like to move Resolution R 5700 with the amended proclamation of emergency as discussed.
Is that good? City Attorney?
Yeah, that works.
Okay. It has been moved by Deputy Mayor Arnold, second by Councilor Sweet, to move forward Resolution 5700 with the deletion of Section 3. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, City Manager, for bringing this forward.
So that then takes us to the fiscal note itself, which is fiscal, and so we just did a motion to approve the fiscal note to use $100,000 of an allocated general fund for this purpose.
So moved?
It's been moved by Councilor Falcone, second by Councilor Sweet, to move forward the fiscal note of $100,000 to move from the general fund to support human services organizations. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
So thank you very much, and we will keep the council informed every step of the way as to what we're doing with this. Third item is actually related to the design review, and in consultation with city attorney. So we heard fairly loud and clear, the council in the discussion of design review board wanted to make sure that one commission or board wasn't making a decision about the future or fate of another commission or board. The council asked that the issues related to the design review board should be brought to the council and not to the planning commission. So assuming that's the case, you'll get a chance to run that. So in reviewing the code, the code says that unless the council assigns otherwise, the planning commission must hold the public hearing. And the council assigning otherwise can be by just a motion saying, we would like to make a motion that code changes related to the design review board be heard by the council directly. So if the council were to make that motion tonight, we could just bring it to you and not have to go to the planning commission.
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that the public hearing regarding the design review board be held by the city council and not the planning commission.
Second.
Give that to Black. A motion has been made by Councilor Tim Chisen, second by Councilor Black, that the city council is going to hear the design review board changes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
And then last item, just in discussions about the timing of the various council meetings and the topics that you have left, we are extending both council meetings to essentially include the study sessions. So we've actually moved the study sessions off, so that we have the opportunity to have longer meetings to get done sooner, so you don't have to go late into the evening, and you don't have to have a special meeting after December 9th. So the main focus of the next meeting study session will be the Kraken, and we'll be walking you through all of the Kraken documents and so forth. But so just want to let you know that, that we, working with the mayor and the deputy mayor, we've pushed a few things off to January, and we are going to be starting sort of the business sooner, and we think we'll be able to get done in time, so that the councils have to have a special meeting in December.
Councilor Sweet?
Will those, so are we suspending the study session, so that discussion of the Kraken will happen during council meeting?
Yes. We're essentially creating those as part of the business.
So we can make decisions.
Yeah.
Councilor Black, did you raise your hand?
I didn't, but actually, I do have a question. So when does notice of the changes in the meeting schedule, when does the public get, get notified that if you want to see the business meeting, you're not going to show up at 6:00 or so, whatever it might be? And how's that decision made? So I just want to make sure I understand that.
We, for all of our meetings, provide a public notice of those out, and these ones will notify the 5:30 start time as a special meeting, rather than as a study session. So from 5:30 to 7:30, it'll be noticed as a special meeting. The clerk's office puts out those notices on a regular schedule. I'm now forgetting your exact timing on how early we get that out, but there, it won't be the day before. We'll give some notice on that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good.
Thank you. Anything else?
And any other calendar items from the council before we break?
Just a reminder that during our next meeting, I will be attending the meeting virtually, because I'll be on a housing tour. I'll be in my hotel room.
At least the same time zone.
Yes.
Anyone else?
All right, thank you. That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. All right. We held our first executive session to review employee performance earlier this evening. We are now going exec session on Item 11B to discuss the potential acquisition of real property as authorized by R C W 4231101, Section B. We expect to reconvene our regular meeting at approximately 11:20 minutes?
It's got, yes, 20 minutes.
Only for the purposes of adjournment. Thank you, everyone.